Ready to go? All right. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the May 9th Pennington County Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on May 17th, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. Note that the Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forums, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. So, on the back table, there's half sheets of paper, and those are the speaker request forums. If you'd like to speak on an item on the agenda, and you are neither the applicant nor the agent, I would ask that you fill those out and bring them over. Probably hand them to Jerry today, and she'll get them to me, and it helps me organize the discussion and call people up in an orderly fashion when it comes time to speak on the issue. So just note that. First item on the agenda is roll call. Note that the entire board is here. Item number one, approval of the April 25th, 2022 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Noting none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Move. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number two is approval of the agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of items three through six, followed by normal commission items, seven through 18, and then 19 through 23 are normal end-of-meeting items. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Noting none. Is there a motion for approval of today's agenda?
So, move?
Second.
Motion and second for approval of today's agenda. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And motion carries. Take it away, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review, CU 1218, for Paul and Don Marcell to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1218, with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review, CU 1918, for Perry and Vicki Van Newkirk to allow a vacation home rental in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1918, with conditions. Item number five is Minor Platt, MPL 22-12, for Little Guys LLC, Benjamin Brink, KTM Design Solutions is the agent, to create lots one and two of Powder House subdivision, and staff recommends approval of Minor Platt, MPL 22-12, with conditions. And finally, item six is Minor Platt, MPL 22-14, for Alan Knutson, D.C. Scott Surveyors, to reconfigure lot lines to create lot BR of lot one and lot CR of lot one of Bengal Creek Mountain Estate subdivision, and staff recommends approval of Minor Platt, MPL 22-14, with conditions.
Any items that staff wishes to pull from the agenda?
No, not at this time.
Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the agenda? Noting none. All those folks in the audience, items three, four, five, and six are on the consent agenda. If you're unfamiliar with our process, the consent agenda is a grouping of items where we'll vote on all of those items at the same time. Before we do that, I want to make sure that no one in the audience wishes to speak on agenda items three, four, five, or six. Seeing none. Staff's recommendation is for approval of today's consent agenda. Items three through six, is there a motion?
So, move.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
So, I had a motion over here. Are you a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and second for approval of the consent agenda. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item seven.
Good morning, Commissioner Chutima Saboon. Planning Department. Agenda item number seven is conditional use permit, CU 22-04, to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant is Schoolhouse LLC, Larry Tuber. The location is 9295, oh, I'm sorry, 9295 Clarkson Road. This item was in front of view on February 28th, 2022. At that time, it was continued because the house was not complete, completed. On April 26th, 2022, staff performed a side visit to the subject property and found that the house was 95% completed, and smoke detectors and fire extinguisher were installed. Therefore, staff recommend approval of conditional use permit, CU 22-04, with 18 conditions.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
When an applicant for a vacation home rental makes an application, and they don't refer to fire pits, how do we handle that? I see there's no references, so I assume they did not refer to wanting to have fire pits. But do we make a condition, or do we put it in the file? What do we do, Chutima?
So, we have a condition that state that if there's a fire pit, or the applicant indicate that they want to have a fire pit at the property, the applicant will need to obtain a burn permit from the burn permit and then post it on the house, and then also provide a copy to, also provide a copy to the planning department.
You missed me a little bit. As a board member, how would I know that they, this particular one doesn't want it, just because there's no reference to it in here?
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't indicate that they want to have one, and then when staff performed a side visit, staff didn't see the fire pit at that time. And if the next year review, because it's a one-year review approval, if the applicant indicated that they want to have one or staff file at the property, a burn permit will be, will be added as a condition of approval.
Thank you, Chutima.
I'm gonna go sideways here a little bit. I thought, though, that the intent of our, the discussion in the past has been for any vacation home rental, that that, that standard language we put in there regarding the fire pits, does that, does that get to the heart of your question?
That's where I was headed, because I think the fire pits are such important, especially with me and the fire in the hills, that I think we need some reference to condition, but I was going to wait for discussion on that. But that's where I'm headed. Either we could throw our standard conditions in there, or we could at least make a reference that at this time, they've just stopped not to have them. But that doesn't mean that one of their people couldn't walk out there, the renters or clients, and start a fire. So, it'd be nice to have it in there.
In this instance, when I read through the information provided in the packet, the applicant specifically disallows fires. But I, so I wouldn't think that there would be an issue with adding that as a condition, and I'd be in favor of that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions? Go ahead.
If we add it as a condition, though, wouldn't it sound like we're giving permission?
It would be, they need to follow the same rules that all the other vacation home renters or vacation home conditional use permits would follow. In this instance, they're making a rule in addition to the rule from the county disallowing it on their specific property. Fair question? Further discussion? Go ahead.
How many vacation home rentals are in this particular area?
I don't have that answer as of right now. I can do some more research and get back to you.
Something like nine.
I was just curious. We've got a lot of pushback on this, and I was just curious if some people thought there was an excessive number there at this point, or if this was just this one they were worried about.
I'm sorry, I do not have that answer. Yep, and then...
Mr. Chair, I just wanted, I was gonna actually bring this up during items from staff, but we do have a Vacation Home Rental Committee formed. Our first meeting will be the beginning of June, and that is one of the issues that we are going to look at as far as density and certain subdivisions, so...
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Further questions? Noting none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? And to confirm, it's my understanding that one of the applicants is on the Zoom call, but was only there to answer questions. Is that correct? I want to make sure that you don't want to speak to the issue.
I don't, I don't have anything to contribute unless you have some further questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Noting none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, CU 22-04. Is there a motion?
I say move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
One, no. Motion carries. We're on item eight.
Item eight is a proposed road naming. The planning department received a road naming application to name an existing right-of-way, Veridian Way. The request was routed for an interdepartmental review. There's no concern or objection were received. The proposed road name met the requirements from the emergency service, 911. Staff recommends approval of the proposed road name as Veridian Way for entire existing roadway located off of Pioneer Circle with one conditions.
My question is, in one of the later items in the, in the agenda, a lot of the associated properties and the landowners was listed. In this instance, it wasn't. We had a separate issue, and I'm not going to go into that, but the result of that was some of the adjacent landowners, it was going to be kind of a big deal for them to get all their, their addresses changed. Has that process went, been had with all of the adjacent landowners that are, would be affected by this name change?
So, the road naming application process, the affected property owner will also need to sign, and then on the application that they are aware that their address, their existing addresses will be changed. If this road naming is approved, and the applicant, Ms. Tonya Mandy, will also receive a signature from the property owner that is affected on this, this, this three lot right here.
Okay.
Yep.
So, everyone's been notified. Everyone's okay with the name change?
That's correct.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Chutima, your one condition says responsible for payment and posting. I assume that then, when these folks apply for these things, they understand that, that they have to meet a certain spec for the installation of the sign. You used the word posting, and, and what I'm saying is, there is a cost if you can't do it yourself, and I know the highway department really frowns on people self-installing them. Do the people that applied for these understand that?
Yes. And that the road name, that the sign has to meet the requirement from the county highway, and I spoke with the applicant with this, with this road naming, and the other one that on the, the later item that, that they will contact the county highway that will post the sign with, to meet that requirement, or go to the county highway and ask them to post the sign with the payment.
Just for the board members that don't live rural, these signs are excellent now, that are installed for these roads. I think it's helped our out-of-area people find locations much easier in the area, very, very reflective in the evening, so. But it does take a certain installation, and it's important, and there is some cost involved.
Right.
Thank you.
Further questions? Noting none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the name change to Veridian Way instead of Veridian Loop. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
No, second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item nine.
This item is also about the road naming. So, the planning department received a road naming application to change the name of an existing right-of-way, Jensen Road, to Crooked Creek Road. Then the Crooked Creek Road would provide an access for 26 existing lots. Mr. Eisenbauer is also on Zoom. If you have any question, and he also worked with the landowner, the affected landowner, then they are agreed and aware that their existing addresses will be changed. The request was routed for an interdepartmental review. No concern or objection were received, and the proposed road name met the requirements from the emergency services, 911. Staff recommend approval of the proposed road name as Crooked Creek Road with one conditions.
Thank you. My, so you just mentioned this, but to make sure, I see four or five different limited partnerships, landowners, et cetera, along this entire stretch of road, and everyone is signed off on this?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions. Go ahead.
Doesn't Jensen Road intersect with I-90?
Correct.
Well, who will be responsible for changing that sign for the Jensen Road exit?
The applicant worked with, he contacted the South Dakota Department of Transportation with the road, road sign, and staff also sent out the request, the common, I'm sorry, routing packet for this request to the DOT, and they said that they don't have any concern, and that will be between the applicant and the DOT to post the sign.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you get to the point, you're going to go off into Jensen Road, the one that goes towards the Badlands, Lionel Jensen's old place, does this road just off the other side, is it a continuation of the, of the regular Jensen Road that most of us know that goes towards the Badlands?
This is the whole Jensen Road up there, which is go all the way to the north and the south. Yeah.
I looked at that, and I still wasn't exactly sure if that was a continuation, or if it was an offset in a completely separate place.
I'm not sure about Jensen Road in the Badlands.
And you get off of the interstate. It says Jensen Road, and you get off, you can go that way, towards the Badlands. Is this road the opposite way, the same road, but the opposite way towards the north?
Mr. Eisenbauer, will you be able to answer that question?
According, according to the map, it, it goes...
See, and I guess if that's it, I would wonder why somebody would want to change that.
I can't, I can't answer that.
I could answer that question. It is a, I believe I can answer it. I guess this is Tyrell Eisenbauer, and it is a road that, you know, as you can see on the diagram, it's a dead-end road either way you go, and it does not continue all the way to the Badlands. It hits 185th, no, 236th Street, and it wraps around to hit Sage Creek Road is the road that goes to the Badlands, is Sage Creek Road. Yep. If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. It does. I was just curious why, why we were changing a road that was, I think, fairly well-known to, to a different name. That, that was my only question.
Well, I, I have a little explanation for that. When my, when I moved in the place a few years ago, I was brought to my attention by quite a few local community members, not even ones that live along the road, were wondering when I was going to get the road name changed, or when we were the neighbors, and I am like, well, I never thought about it. But then I got to visiting with the neighbors, and they all wanted it changed too, so then I started this process with visiting with them and planning, planning and zoning committee or commission, and visiting with everybody, and I decided to take that route, because the neighbors all supported it. And according to some maps, not, not all maps, but some maps, about halfway heading south down the Jensen Road, Crooked Creek Road starts, and then it finishes to 236th Street. And I don't get for sure why, some maps say it's Crooked Creek Road, and some maps say it's Jensen Road all the way. And that's what my neighbors and I got to visiting with, and that's what, that's what we all decided, I guess, is to go with and change it all to be Crooked Creek Road.
I have no...
If that helps, I guess.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Yep.
Further questions? I already asked, but to confirm, no one in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff's recommended, recommendation is for approval of the road name change from Jensen Road to Crooked Creek Road. Is there a motion?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 10.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item number 10 is Layout Plan 22-15 to subdivide and create Lot One of JV Subdivision and Lot Two R of HES number 5363. The applicant is Isaac Almazza. The property owner is Karen Murphy. Their survey area is Renner Associates LLC. Location of the property is at 23800 Highway 385, approximately .72 mile northeast of the intersection of Highway 385 and South Highway 16. It is 7.4 acres, currently zoned agriculture district. There is 100-year and floodway on the property. With that, staff recommends to continue Layout Plan 22-15 indefinitely at the applicant and surveyor's request. They have some issues that they need to work through. They previously submitted a layout plan last year, which is a completely different plan than what they've submitted this time, so they've since went back and reconsidered that previously submitted plan.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this item? To confirm, no one in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff's recommendation is to continue indefinitely Layout Plan LPL 22-15. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion and second to continue. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 11.
Item number 11 is a follow-up rezone request for the same property to rezone 7.137 acres from Agriculture District to Ranchette District. Again, the owner is Karen Murphy. The applicant is JV Gulch, Isaac Almazza. The surveyor is Renner Associates. And again, with this recommendation is to continue rezone 22-09 indefinitely at the applicant and surveyor's request.
Questions for staff? Noting none. To confirm, no one in the audience wishes to speak on this item. Goes with the previous item. Noting none. Staff's recommendation is to continue rezone RZ 22-09 indefinitely. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Motion and second to continue. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify, or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 12.
Agenda item 12 is Preliminary Platte 22-13 to subdivide and create Lot A of Lot One of Martha Washington Place subdivision. The applicant is Martha Washington Place LLC. Rodney Johnson is the agent. Surveyor is KTM Design Solutions. Janelle is in the audience. If you have any questions for her. Property is located south of Old Hill City Road, approximately .83 mile southeast of the intersection of Twin Springs Road and Old Hill City Road. It is currently zoned agriculture district. Access is off Old Hill City Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. This request was filed on March 25th of this year, therefore the subdivisions that were in effect at that time were applied to this request. And with that, there is one correction I'd like to make to this request, is that this be heard as a minor plat, not a preliminary.
Because you're changing, yeah.
Right. There is, under the new subdivision regulations, any dedication of right-of-way requires preliminary plating, but however, since this was under the old subdivision regulations, any dedication of additional right-of-way adjacent to existing rights-of-way can go forward as a minor plat. With that, the applicant...
Jason, could you state that again, so I didn't hear it all? Sorry.
Sure. That's a little confusing, because we have two different subdivision regulations going on here. So, under the previous subdivision regulations, you're allowed to dedicate right-of-way to an existing right-of-way, which is what the applicants have done here. If you look up on the screen, this is Old Hill City Road, and they are dedicating additional right-of-way up there.
Okay.
So, under those old subdivision regulations, they can move forward with a minor plat instead of the preliminary plat.
All right. Understood. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Jason, is there direct access to this property off of Old Hill City Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just one, one access?
Yes. One access, and then they've dedicated a 40-foot wide utility and access easement to access the remaining balance of this parcel.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
What about the access to the, the rest of Lot One, now that we have a, what do you call it, Lot A? Or what do you think? Yeah, Lot A of Lot One. Are they still together? Is it still one piece, or...
Lot A of Lot One is a separate parcel. You see on the left-hand side where the, the, where the existing lot is on the left. They're taking off this portion here to the north and creating Lot A of Lot One. They have the 40-foot access easement, allowing access to the remaining balance of that parcel.
Okay. Right there. At a section line? You see what you're saying? Right there at the section line?
Well, the easement comes down to the south this way, which...
But that's a utility easement, right?
It's access and utility.
Is it?
Right.
Okay. But it will automatically go forward to the other? In other words, if somebody else, if somebody else owns Lot A, the remainder of Lot A, what are they, they're going to call that Lot One?
B. Well, if they, I believe if they would plat anything more out of this portion that remains, they may potentially call it Lot B of Lot One.
Okay. Whatever they're going to call it, but if, if that had separate ownership, does that automatically allow access? What I'm saying is, owning the one automatically allow the other to have access? I don't know that we've got anything written like that, do we?
Let's, I guess I'm not following. It's a 40-foot wide access and utility easement, so that allows access to that lot, the remaining balance of the lot.
Okay.
They're, they're plating off the front lot, which leaves the remainder of the back lot, so they're creating an access easement through the front lot to a back lot.
What I was getting at is if it changes hands, so you have two different owners, and maybe the new owner wanted to also break some off or whatever, and would change the accesses.
Okay.
Does that automatically allow access to that back piece? I...
That would be handled. If they wanted to subdivide any further, that would go through our office, and then we would address access at that point.
Okay. But I, but what I was getting at is we were voting on it, we're cutting it off right now. That's all I was getting. Janelle, I know you know what's my hang-up here. Thank you.
So, we've specifically created that 40-foot access and utility easement on this plat through Lot A of Lot One to provide access to the balance of the property. So, it's created on the plat document, so until...
Okay.
That would be changed or altered through a different process, it provides access to the remainder of the property.
And it is put on there as a utility as well as...
Access and utility.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Michael.
Isn't Lot B fronted on the Hill City Road?
Lot A is.
But B that goes up, doesn't it go clear up to the Hill City Road?
That's a different, I, I think Jason was referring to like a potential Lot B to the south of this. There's an already platted Lot B to the northeast that you're seeing on the screen there, and it has its own access, and it's totally separate. It's owned differently. It's not part of this plat. It's just identified as an adjoining parcel there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Janelle.
Further questions? Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff recommends approval, and so this would be minor plat, and I'm assuming it would, you'll look noted as MP 22-13?
Correct.
That one has not been used before?
No. No.
Okay. Uh, with five conditions, is there a motion?
I so moved.
Second.
Motion and second--
Just one item for discussion, did you, did I hear you say that it was gonna be changed to read minor plat?
Yes, so it will be, staff recommends approval of minor plat MP 22-13.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other motion and a second? Further discussion? Did, did we have a second? Okay, make sure. No further discussion, noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries for an item thirteen.
Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Muller, again. Item 13 is Plan Unit Development Overlay PU 22-08 to allow a recreational resort to include recreational vehicle park, vacation home rentals, and a caretaker manager's residence in a highway service district. The applicant and owner is Black Hills Tiny Resort LLC, Jolene Zoller, and Ms. Zoller is in the audience if you have questions. The property is located at 8674 South Highway 16, about a quarter mile northeast, northeast of the intersection of Highway 16 and Neckyoke Road. When considering Plan Unit Develop, Plan Unit Development Overlays, we consider seven criteria, and I will just read the answers. Yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood. Three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development. I'm reading the wrong ones, sorry. I'm reading the conditional use permit one, so I'll go back to the PUD. One is, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional uses permitted in a highway service district. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are of a type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Item three is, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet the standards governing the area density and off-street parking of a highway service district. Parking was calculated as one spot per guest bedroom, campsite, plus one spot per every two employees for a total of 145 required parking spots. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is 13.79 acres. Five, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is owned by Black Hills Tiny Resort LLC, a member-managed company. The business is in good standing, according to the South Dakota Secretary of State. Item six, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are not designed to be detrimental or to endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And item seven, yes, depending to zoning ordinance section 510 criteria listed in the following table. So again, yes, the uses of the proposed district should not be detrimental, yes, the uses of the proposed overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood, yes, the uses of the proposed overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties. Yes, the proposed overlay district contains adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary site improvements. Yes, the existing approach will provide ingress and egress as to minimize traffic, just as on the Highway 16. The South Dakota Department of Transportation had no comments or concerns with this request. Yes, requested uses conform to all the applicable regulations of a highway service district with an approved PUD overlay district. And yes, future land uses identified as highway service, recreational tourism uses are consistent within this district. So this was routed around through the interdepartmental review process, there were no items of concern that were identified. A portion of the property was rezoned from Agriculture District to Highway Service District. This planning commission and board approved that change. The property was recently planted through the city of Rapid City to remove that interior lot line, so that interior lot line is now gone. So it's one lot, the proposed uses to be, uses appear to be consistent with the uses within half-mile of the property. There is a PUD overlay to the south that does have a farmer's market, a wedding venue, a pumpkin patch to the south of that, is another recreational vehicle park with rentals, and then across the street is Reptile Gardens. There's no off-street parking spaces identified on the applicant site plan, however, staff does feel there's ample area for those parking places. The applicant will need to provide the planning department with current licenses from the South Dakota Department of Health and the South Dakota Department of Revenue. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's requests, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. The property owner is currently working with the city of Rapid City, installing the septic system for this request. Staff is recommending approval of this Plan Unit Development Overlay with 23 conditions.
Thank you, questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Brittany, I didn't get page one of the Aaron Olson letter in the packet, I noticed it said page two of it, and I didn't get page one, I don't know whether anybody else did, or not, and I just, that was the, from the livestock services program?
Oh, that's the approval of the onsite wastewater treatment system.
Right, 'cause it had a few things in there about that the RV systems, when they're treated water, that sort of thing, and I just kind of was interested in reading the whole thing, but it, and it involved more in my clarification on, if you go back to Brandon, Intern Septic Coordinator, Tocoti, you've got 12 full-service RV sites, and that's on a 2,050-gallon tank, and drain field, and then you've got the 12 tiny home. And as I see it, the state approved up, up to 27 via the, so that we've got 24 of them listed, and there's up to 27 if they want them, is that correct?
Correct, so they would have to upgrade their septic system in order to expand the uses, the Plan Unit Develop, Development Overlay is for the maximum build-out.
That's what their conditions are about, okay. I just, I just wanted to know to you that I didn't get one, and I figured there must have been some other ones on there.
Right, so the Plan Unit Development, the, the way that I wrote it with the conditions is for the maximum build-out. I know Ms. Zoller's in the audience, they plan on phasing in this development, so it's going to take a few years to phase in all of the uses.
Just the second half of the question, because that's the first time we've ever seen that, is that becoming more common to see a reference to the sanitation items that people use in the RVs and their tanks, affecting their approval or nonapproval of the system, where in other words, other people get involved?
Yes, so there was a change in staffing with DEA and R, so it used to be Kent Woodmansey, but now with Neil, he has a different perspective, and his requirements are different through DEA and R for these commercial systems. So the letters of approval that we get back have more information--
Sounds tougher.
It is.
Because if they're gonna include those chemicals, and that's very, most of the people do use chemicals in their RV, in the tank to keep it clean and operating.
Yes, it, it has become, they have become more strict with their requirements, yes.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Yes, I have one. Forty-eight full-service tiny home sites, are they going to put tiny homes on there themselves?
So Ms. Zoller can probably answer that best for you, but her intention is to either have people bring them in and out to stay and rent, or have them there on-site, where people can rent them out to other people, so.
Okay, and then the RV, the RV sites would be just the standard pull-through, do your thing and leave?
Correct.
But the tiny homes could be a permanent thing?
That, it could be, I don't think that's her intent, but I can let her answer that question better.
Okay.
When I met with her, I've met with her on several occasions regarding this request, so.
Further questions for staff? Okay. Mrs. Zoller, if you could come up and address Mike, Michael's question, that'd be great.
Hello. Um, his question.
Yes.
It's actually, it's part of a franchise from, the people are in Colorado, they have a community of tiny homes that they put in a floodplain, and they're all on wheels, so they can take them on out if the flood happens. So they're, they're tiny homes, but they get rotated out three to five years, and they stay there, it's kind of like a hotel, is how they treat it. So they stay there on the property, and though, at that time, other people own those, and they rented them to We Casa, which is the company. And so basically, at the time where they needed to change out, the owner would come get their tiny home, they would get rent for it, and then they would take it and replace it with another one. Currently, We Casa is building all the tiny homes, up to codes, up to specifications, like they have to have a safety ladder, or not ladder, but they have safety stairs, places inside the community or inside the home can't be dangerous to anybody, so they build them themselves now, and they've been in business for seven years, so they got, they got it down, they know what to do. So they're bringing up five homes, and they're also bringing up, um, maybe six eco tents, which are from Australia, they have plumbing and kitchen, bed, everything, and those probably would be taken down during the wintertime. So we have right now 24 spaces, but the, the one section is gonna be for tiny home rental and tent, glamping rental.
Okay, so, so is this considered a franchise as such?
Yeah, it's, it's very small, there's just them, and then they added three locations. So our place was one of the locations they chose.
So somebody wants to rent a tiny home, do they go through them or they go through you?
It's a, it's through them. There is a, it's, they have their own reservation system, and it's gonna be managed by the three locations, so they go, they do all the cleaning, the housing, the staff, so they're basically renting my land and giving me a percentage, and then I'm gonna be building a couple tiny homes, so my percentage will be higher. But there is, those are their tiny homes for the first year, and then eventually, hopefully, this, this is one of my first designs, and it's a lot fuller than I want, so we're not gonna do this much.
So the billing would be done through your franchise outfit?
The ones that they're doing is through them, and I'll build, I'll build my own.
Okay, okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions?
So, go ahead. Are they, these tiny homes gonna be set up with, for considering tenants transient 30 days and less?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, no more than 30 days.
Okay.
And then it's like kind of a, it's a high, high-end kind of thing. Some of the tiny homes that they have on their property were on HV2V, and they have themed tiny home, like they have a hobbit house that's similar, so that, it's kind of an experience also.
I just know that below 30 days, it's a taxing thing in South Dakota.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
And you're Jolene Zoller, I just wanted to be accurate for my own notes, thank you, I didn't catch that stuff.
Further questions? Thank you very much for your time. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of Plan Unit Development Overlay PU 22-08 with 23 conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries for an item 14.
Item 14 is Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment PU 22-07 to amend the Sunset Ranch Plan Unit Development to allow a dirt bike track on the subject property. The applicant is David Woodhead, the property is located at 15574 Lonesome Dove Street, is currently zoned Plan Unit Development, the existing land use in the area is residential and agriculture. And when considering Planned Unit Developments, we consider the seven criteria, and I'll just read the answers. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of a conditional use permit, they are as follows. Yes, the requested use could be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Yes, the requested use could impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted due to noise and traffic from the dirt track. Yes, the requested use could impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property. The district has predominantly residential and agricultural uses. No, the applicants did not obtain a stormwater permit prior to operation of the dirt track. The applicants will need to address erosion and sediment control, stabilization issues, and dust control at the site. Yes, access will be taken off Lonesome Dove Street, which is located in the Sunset Ranch Road District. Roads constructed in the subdivision were constructed to allow residential and agricultural traffic. No, dirt tracks, dirt tracks are generally conditional uses in commercial districts, and no future land uses identified as Planned Unit Development, the proposed use is not consistent with other uses established in the district. The original Planned Unit Development was amended and approved on November 10th, 2008. There was a condition that was, that was added back in 2008, that a BMX, racetrack, motocross, and ATV track be allowed on the Common Lot 16, which is now 16R, there has been some plating with that, Block 6, and that racetracks be for the residents of the Sunset Ranch and their guests only. There were, that Plan Unit Development change was brought because there was a current violation of another property back in 2008 in complaints, so the developer worked with the residents in the area to amend the PUD to allow that dirt track on that Lot 16 of Block 6. This was routed around through the interdepartmental review process, there were a couple items of concern that came back, the county ordinance enforcement said there was a current violation on the property for a dirt track, and there is a current violation on the property for a business being run out of the residence. The other item of concern came back from the county environmental planner, that the applicants must apply for a stormwater permit and implement erosion, sediment control measures, and dust control. In addition, if the request is denied, they must reclaim the property. The analysis, in 2008, the PUD was amended, again, like I said, the issue with allowing a dirt bike track in the development was addressed in 2008, and staff has received several letters of opposition regarding this request, they were in your packet, you did receive some this morning, there were a few letters of support for this, but staff did recommend denial of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment PU 22-07. I do have photos from this, and I also do have a video that was submitted by a local landowner, but I believe he is in the audience, and when he comes up, I can play that during his--
Thank you. Can you show me where Lot 16R is in relation to the entire subdivision?
Lot 16R is here.
And there's access to it?
No, there's not. Well, there's platted access. There's platted access.
Please don't belt things out from the, from the audience, we'll, we'll, we'll work through the items one at a time. Okay. Further questions for staff?
It's undeveloped, but there is plated, it is platted.
Okay, further questions for staff?
Where's the applicant's lot in relationship to this 16? It's cleared down, yeah, okay. Though it's not near it at all, then.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Further questions for staff? Okay, we'll move to the speaker request forms, I have a significant number of them. And so normally with speaker request forms, we'd ask that you come up to the podium one at a time, state your name, and, and go through. Again, everyone will have a chance to rebut if there's something you hear, I'd rather not hear things from the audience when people are speaking, and, and that goes to having the respect for the process here. So with that, we'll get started with Caleb Warren.
Hello, I'm Caleb Warren, I live on the property to the northeast, our property's touch on the tip, and I have no problem with the dirt bike track, I think it's an excellent way for young riders to learn the skills, to one day be a safe rider on the road, or a safe rider as a young adult. I've seen youth and older riders riding together, what I've witnessed was a mentorship and everybody wearing the proper safety gear. I think the track should stay or be, be allowed.
Thank you, are there any questions for Mr. Warren? Thank you, sir. The next speaker request form I have is from Brandon Woodward. The next speaker request form I have is from Brandon Woodward. Woodhead, excuse me?
Good morning. We're here today in regards to the dirt bike track in our backyard. I'd like to start off by saying that my dad, David Woodhead, purchased the property with the track already on it. We did not build this track. The previous owner was one of the first people to build into the development and was the third house constructed roughly. He helped us research and verify the track was started in two thousand six. The putt agreement will be referenced today was formed in two thousand eight. The previous owner was told by Caskey that the track was grandfathered in, but there's no paper trail on this. So we are here today to amend the agreement to keep what was already around for sixteen years. The city has informed us of two noise complaints that we are, that we're aware of. Um, we're having to fight to keep our dirt bike track. We're also aware of the locations, those who complained, one of whom the city didn't deem in the necessary circumference to send a letter to. These ordinance have both happened during the non-noise ordinance hours, ten AM to ten PM. We have maintained the track and respected the noise ordinance. So truly, they should be fighting change of hours instead of take something away from my family that means so much. I've been riding dirt bikes since I was able to walk. Uh, if this track goes away, you're not only taking something away from me, but away from my eight-year-old niece who comes out and rides. Who's one of the few female competitors in the state. And from my nephews, one of which who is four years old, that young guy right there, who is now learning to ride his, learning to ride this year on this track. Our track is a safe practice environment for friends, family to learn and enjoy the sport. We're being asked to take away our track because the putt agreement formed in two thousand eight promised a common lot was provided with us with a dirt bike track along with many other fulfilled promises. It has been fourteen years, but you now have the, we do not have the dirt bike track, horse riding arena, BMX track, pool, et cetera. And if anyone wanted to ride in the common lot, did, who is going, and, and who is going to cover the liability insurance and make sure that areas are maintained? If our track goes away, we will be pushing for these promises to be fulfilled. And with the extra expense, I'm sure our taxes will rise. It has been truly hurtful to see the social media, social media posts tearing down my family for how we use our land. My dad purchased this location after retiring from the air force and serving twenty-two and a half years. This was the first house he purchased and the place he decided to truly settle down and call home. It provided him a, a place he could watch his grandkids learn to ride dirt bikes out the window as he recovered from leukemia blood cancer. It is our slice of heaven and we have the freedom to use it how we choose. I would also like to note that there is dirt bike tracks right next to ours and they received a complaint letter as well. However, their letter was reinstated by the county. Not only does this show prejudice, this also shows the track itself is not the problem. And those who complain need to focus their efforts on modifying the noise ordinance hours to suit their lifestyle. If the track goes away, we will still ride our dirt bikes.
Thank you. Questions for, um, Mister Woodhead?
Question.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Question. So who's allowed to use the track? Cause I, as I read this, I thought it was kinda restricted to the people of the area. But you mentioned a niece comes out?
Yes, sir. Um, so this is a family track. Uh, it's been, we've lived here, I believe, since, uh, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, I believe. Um, you know, and a lot of my just friends and family are the only ones that are allowed to use a track. It's not a personal come, come as you go. It's just, uh, um, you know, we, we are always home whether, whether someone's out there riding or not. I mean, we're, we're there at all times. So it's basically friends and family, or if somebody asks to ride, if there's in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you. Next speaker request form I have is, uh, Travis, um, Blasis, is that correct?
Yep. My name's Travis Blasis. I live over on, uh, one five five four four Lonesome Dove. About four blocks or four, uh, four lots away from these guys. And I guess the one thing I'm seeing here is people are complaining about the noise. But these guys, when they ride, they might ride on weekend from ten o'clock in the morning till about four o'clock in the afternoon, maybe. Once every five weeks. It's not like they're out there every day raising, you know, raising a dust cloud. And we all moved out there. There's six acre lots, most of them. So we, everybody kinda moved out there to kinda have their own thing. You know, the, the deal said there was gonna be a dirt bike track out there. And I think that's what people are saying, well, there's no dirt bike tracks. You shouldn't have dirt bikes. Well, there's no horse riding arena that was promised either, so maybe we shouldn't have horses. I don't have an issue with it. Like I said, it's once every five weeks, maybe one or two here and there. But, um, other than that, I guess. I seen there was something mentioned about a, a business being run out of the shop. I know that's not what we're here for, but that was mentioned. There is, within sight of that shop, there was three businesses, commercial businesses listed with their home address as their business address. So I guess we can't really complain about them either. But that's really all I had to say.
Thank you. Any questions?
I, I have one question. How much riding would you tolerate? In other words, you say they do it once every five weeks, uh, for six or seven hours. Would you tolerate this every weekend for six to seven hours?
It, it doesn't bother me either way. I, I'm, I'm away from it. There's, you know, you get, there's dirt bikes that go up and down the track. There's, or motorcycles, dirt bikes, four-wheelers, side by sides on the road. There's people speeding by, you know, it's just seems like everybody's just kinda, everybody's got a gripe about something and this doesn't really bother me. But I don't know, I guess what gets me is we're out there because we wanna be spread out, not live in town and to have stuff like this. And a lot of the people that are moving out there are from town. So they wanna bring the town rules in and force everybody that's coming out there. I heard another one to say they're, they're worried about property values going down. That's not the case. Our stuff's been going up crazy. So that's not a real issue either, but.
You would.
I, I don't really care if they ride every weekend, you know, they're, they're not doing it before time or after time. So.
You mean the hours that they establish, ten to ten or whatever it is that there would be a quiet time? Is that it?
Yeah, that's, they don't ride before and they don't ride after.
So would you tolerate a commercial establishment where there were races and things of that nature that were formalized?
The Box Elder Dirt Track, that's kitty corner about two miles. You can hear that on Saturdays. That doesn't, that's not a big deal either. We got the train that comes by every morning, honks a horn. We got the B ones that fly over the house and rattle the things on the walls. Really can't, can get noise. Bond mowers at six o'clock in the morning. So.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir, for your comments. The next speaker request form I have is Tucker Green.
Good morning. Um, my name is Tucker Green. I live at two two eight one nine Gateway Drive, which is just about an eighth of a mile, I would say. A little to the northwest of the property with the track. So I would say that I'm relatively close to the property. So, um, I've really had no trouble. We've, as near as I can figure, so Travis and I would be about the longest tenured people. Everybody else had moved out there afterwards. And since the time that I've been there, there's been three different tracks with no issues from anyone. This one, I agree with the first gentleman that spoke. You see a lot of little kids and a lot of pit bikes and a lot of people learning to ride. Uh, you asked, how much would a person tolerate, right? I mean, I would guess that everybody has their limits, but we all know that we're not talking about a, a commercial racing thing here. We're talking about a family-owned track doing family activities outdoors within the allotted time that was set forth in two thousand eight when it was amended. And I just don't see any reason to make this family give up something that means something to them. I mean, he gave twenty-two years as an air force veteran. He goes and buys a place that he can have the life that he wants to have. And I understand that we all bought a house out there so that we could have the life that we feel like that we wanna have and that we deserve. But people, I don't know, is the guy that owns two horses that's hauling hay into that place and his hay's not getting tested and our ditches are full of thistle? I mean, is the little bit of noise from ten to ten that that dirt bike track is doing really causing more harm than obnoxious weeds getting brought in on a hay trailer? So I, I think that we all need to be really, really careful when we're trying to tell somebody else how to live and how to function on their property. I don't want my property values to go down. But there's a lot more involved in that than a family-owned dirt bike track that gets used one to two to, at the most, I don't know, maybe four times a month, five times a month. You see people out there and it's never anybody raising cane and doing obnoxious. It's people out there watching a little kid go over. I don't know, I kinda, I guess, I enjoy standing on my deck and watching that and hearing it. It's not a, it's not a sound that bothers me. And I came from ranch people, so I understand. But I also understand that if your horse is scared of a dirt bike, maybe you need to be a better horseman. I don't know. People down in White River use horses and dirt bikes together to gather cattle. It's not a, they're not too separate. It's, it's all people trying to enjoy and do what they wanna do. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have one.
Go ahead.
Now, you're saying that maybe they use it four or five times a month. And the, the previous gentleman said it was maybe once every five weeks. That's kind of a big discrepancy.
I said it the most, it's five times a month. And that's in the summer months and, but it's, I don't think that it's ever reached a level of what I would call a problem. I mean, it's never, I don't know, I have a little fire pit out in the front of my house and I've never been sitting out there and having a beer saying, I wish all that noise would go away.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker request form I have is from Tanner Colburn.
Hello, I'm Tanner Colburn. I live directly across the street from this property. And I was just gonna tell a couple stories, cause prior to them buying it, when I first moved in, uh, the previous owner had a couple boys and me and my wife were just starting our family. And I came from a divorced family and didn't have the same childhood that the kids across the street were blessed enough to get. And when you would saw, see these kids get off the bus, I mean, they would run as fast as they can to the deck, throw their backpack and meet their dad and the joy you'd see on these kids. It was just like, that's awesome, you know? So I always knew as my kids started getting older, I was excited that I had a track right across the street. My wife stays home with my five kids and never has had a problem with babies waking up with noise, which if living directly across the street, if this was a problem and my wife's trying to get babies down at different times, you would think they would be waking up. They never have. So I mean, as far as it being an issue, I think that's pretty crazy. Let me look at my notes real quick. About what I was also gonna say. Second thing, they bought the house and the track was on it. If it was a big deal, it's not like they went making the track. Those kids that were there before them that rode all the time, I know that they rode it a lot more than they did and there was never an issue. So the fact that there's an issue now kinda has me wondering how that can actually be an issue for him. And I just feel if living directly across the street, it was a problem, I would notice that. That's all I really got. I'm fully supporting it and think it's a really good thing. And I would be very sad to see it go as well. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mister Colburn? Thank you for your comments, sir. The next speaker request form I have is from Maddie Rickman? Reichman, sorry?
Hi, so I, um, was given a couple of these emails and I just kinda wanted to go through. Um, first of all, I totally agree, um, horses and dirt bikes go together. I have horses and I'm also a fellow, uh, you can see me out on a pit bike. They haven't taught me quite how to use a dirt bike yet. Um, one of the complaints was that our track is close to the fence right up behind our house. Um, these people moved in last year and they put their fence there. So that, I would just like to clarify that. Um, they measured out the fence and they chose to put it at the very end of their property line. And our dirt bike track has, like we said, been there for sixteen years. So that should not be an issue. And their horses have also deposited material on our land and we have not complained about that. So I would just like to note that. Um, and, uh, as far as the community lot, the only way we would be able to access that would be to drive through other people's property. And, um, like we said, we have not chosen to ride there due to liability concerns. Our insurer is aware of the track and if something was to happen, our li, home liability insurance would kick in. However, if our niece and nephews were to be riding over there because it does say guests are allowed, would, who is gonna cover it if they would fall and break a leg, um, something like that? We have concerns about that. Our niece, like we said, is eight years old. One of the few female competitors in the state. And seeing her ride in our backyard in a safe environment where we can truly monitor them and learn is the purpose of this. We also have a fellow gentleman in the community who was in a dirt bike accident and is not allowed to compete due to a traumatic brain injury. And he comes and rides at our house because it is a safe environment for him to practice and still enjoy something that means a lot to his family. Um, additional complaints, um, like we have mentioned time and time again, everyone is concerned about the noise. However, the community noise ordinance says quiet hours are from ten PM to ten AM. I don't complain about the neighbor's geese honking at six AM waking me up every morning. I don't complain about the neighbor's horses running back and forth, putting dust on our property. I don't complain about the horses whinnying, the people mowing lawn, anything like that. So if truly the noise is the problem, maybe we should consider amending the noise ordinance versus taking away a dirt bike track. And once again, if the track goes away, nothing says we cannot ride our dirt bikes in our backyards and we would continue to do that. Um, and also, there has been a lot of people commenting on Facebook and social media complaining about things that have nothing to do with what we are trying to amend today. I know there's complaints about businesses. There hasn't, there's multiple businesses being run in the neighborhood. And that's not what we're here for today. And I would just like to say that, um, if anybody has any issues, I, it would have been cool if they would have came and knocked on our door, um, and been neighborly about it versus commenting all over social media, complaining about things where personally, if someone would have came and knocked on our door and said, hey, my kid sleeps until noon on Sundays. Could you not ride your dirt bikes until the afternoon? We would have absolutely respected that and taken that into consideration. Or if someone was having a family party and not wanted us to ride on a Sunday afternoon, we would have absolutely respected that. But nobody has ever once called us, emailed us, texted us, knocked on our door or anything. So I would just like to state that and, um, that's basically all I have to say.
I have a question for you. Who, who owns the common lot?
The common lot? We have no idea. We were just, in this PUD agreement, it says there's a common lot.
Oh, okay.
And you can apparently ride your horse, your dirt bike, fly your airplane, everything on it.
Brittany, can you?
Caskey owns the common lot.
Okay.
And it's actually basically a swamp. So I would have a hard time believing anybody would wanna ride their horse or their dirt bike. Like I said, I have two horses, um, and all of that. So I know how both sides of the story work. I also know my horses aren't afraid of dirt bikes and I have a four-year-old who is pretty wild, so.
Thank you. Further questions? Thank you for your comments. The next speaker request form I have is from Wanda Henning.
I'm extremely new to the neighborhood, so I'm here as a just. I'm extremely new to the neighborhood, so I'm here as a just, cause I don't really know what's going on. But my, I had a question about, um, the rezoning of this. Could this open a door for a larger track, a public track later on this property? Can it go beyond?
I don't know if I'm gonna be able to answer your, so first off, it's not being rezoned.
Okay.
Um, that, that, that is not happening. This, this is a minor planned unit development amendment. Um, I might have, I might, I'll try to explain this, but when a build, when a subdivision comes in and, and they, they wanna, they do, they wanna do things that are maybe a little bit different. A lot of times they'll come in with this planned unit development approach, um, where, um, they, they have specific things and specific ideas, right? So that happened when this was developed. And so, um, the ask today is to make a s- a minor amendment, minor planned unit development to that origi- that original planned unit development. And so I would, uh, make a suggestion that maybe you get your hands on the original planned unit development for, for all of the properties and review that and that would maybe kind of let you know what was, what was originally laid out as part of the subdivision.
Yeah, it was, um. I don't really know that I have a, there's a lot of property to ride in the state. I mean, there's riding everywhere, so I'm not really on board with the necessity of a backyard track personally. Um, that's all I have to say, really.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, thank you again for your comments. Um, the next speaker request form I have is from Ray Henning.
Good morning, staff. Uh, you just heard from my wife. We are really new in the neighborhood. We, we wanted to come live out here because it was peaceful and we could do some things, you know, that we couldn't do in a city. But before we signed a contract to build the house on our property, we had a number of covenants we had to sign and that just really lends to all the limitations that we have of what, what we can do in our property. And even when we wanna do some things on our property, we still have to put in requests with the community builder to have those things, um, looked at to see if it would really build on the community, the value of the community there. So I don't, I don't know any, I don't, just the history that we heard today about this is all I know about it. We've been in our house for about four weeks. And we're just really concerned just that more of these type things could, I mean, not necessarily a dirt track, but just other things that could. Yeah, I don't, I don't really know the word, just that would, it would just grow to be something different than what it is, more of an agricultural type, community.
Sure.
That would be it because then we bring the city in. So I'm not saying that that's what's happening here. But that would just be a concern because we know when we moved in there that we would have limitations on us and I mean, I wasn't really that thrilled about it, but we were in a place that we felt was safe and secure and, and that's, you know, that's really why we wanted to go there. Aside from that, I have absolutely zero complaints about this. We should be able to do what we want with the land, but knowing that we do have some limitations when we move into a community and that's when we do.
Mr. Henning, I have a question for you. You indicated that you had to sign all kinds of covenants. Is, is your subdivision covenant restricted as well?
Well, we, you know, if, if we want, for example, animals, you know, we only have a limitation on how many we have per acre and if we wanna put up a, a shed, we have to get approval. I mean, that's.
Okay, so you do have subdivision covenants that, that run with the property?
We most certainly do. I mean, it has to, you can't put up a pink shed, you know, you have to ha- you, you have to be, so it's almost like, almost like an HOA as I understand it, but we don't actually have a HOA. I know this is coming as from what we were told by the builder. But we do have limitations in the neighborhood and that'd just be a concern if we could, if, if other property owners would would say, well, we wanna do, you know, this, you know, and all these things would happen and that would just be the concern.
Okay. Thank you. Are there further questions? Thank you. Uh, the next speaker request form, um, I have is, uh, from uh, Niall, uh, Moni- Munninger, Munninger? Niall?
Niall, yes. Twenty-two eight sixty-one Gateway Drive. I'd just like to speak that the noise is annoying, we're a ways away, but it's sure not peaceful when they're, when those bikes are running. As far as property values, I would hate to try to show my property and sell it to somebody when those dirt bikes are running because it's not, it's not a peaceful, uh, rural neighborhood that, uh, you would think with that kind of background noise. I guess that's about all I've got to say, but I, I think it would have an adverse effect on the, on the property values. Especially if it became more widespread, uh, I mean, more, uh, more use. But, um, thank you for your time. Any questions?
Go ahead, Michael.
Just to clarify things, there are no covenants and there's no homeowners association? Anything like that?
There's covenants.
There are covenants?
Yes.
Okay. Has anybody ever enforced the covenants? Now, I don't mean necessarily on this, but pink fences or three-story buildings or is this one of these that's laid dormant?
You have to apply to build a building, um, anything like that. So I suppose there would have to be an application for something like this through the, I don't know if it's HOA. I call it HOA, that may not be correct, but through the development anyway.
So you've got some sort of committee that actually is part of this covenant that you have to go to to build a pink fence?
Well, somebody correct me, but I think it's the developer that's, that approves all of those requests or just approves them.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay. Further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
One, there's been a discussion on the amount of racing or riding time that you've seen, um, from once a, every five weeks to once every weekend. What timeframe do you see the re- the?
Frequency of?
Yeah.
And of course, it's just in the warmer weather. Uh, I don't know, you go along, won't hear it for weeks and then you'll, you might hear it a couple of days in a row, you know, I, I, it's very infrequent, doesn't appear to be scheduled times.
Thanks.
Further questions? Thank you, sir, for your comments. The next speaker request form I have is from, uh, Steve Bieber.
Steve Bieber, I live at one five five seven one Lonesome Doug Street, just kinda cataqu- catty corner to the adjacent property. And there are times out there where it's just absolutely ridiculous how much noise is going on and how much dust is flying in the air. And it's just, been a thorn ever since we moved in. We moved in in ten and it was just a little bike track there. And I thought, that's gonna be kinda fun to watch a little kid running around there. But it's growing and continues to grow and continues to grow. And it's just, where, where is it gonna stop?
Questions for Mr. Bieber? Thank you, sir, for your comments. The next speaker request form I have is from, uh, Brian Everhart. Did I say that right?
Good morning. Brian Everhart from two-two eight seven seven Gateway Drive, more on the, uh, western end of the development. Um, don't really have any comments. I'm kinda learning this, uh, actually this week. I didn't know anything about it until uh, prior to this week about being, I, I heard noise from our property, which is quite a distance away. Um, like, like's been said by, uh, several people before, you hear it kinda intermittently here and there. It could be a couple of days in a row, could be, you know, a couple of weeks apart, just, um, and where we're at lo- location-wise, it's kind of in a distance to where, you know, you hear it, but it's not bothersome. Whereas if we were in a more, you know, inter- a lot that was closer, I, I could understand people's frustrations of, you know, the noise and the, not just the noise, but the concern of it becoming something bigger. And as one gentleman mentioned, you know, what's the possibility of something else being established, maybe unrelated to a, uh, a dirt track? I mean, I, racing is, uh, close to our, our, our daughter raced BMX for ten years, so I understand the passion for it and the, the love of the sport. Um, I would hate to see anything be taken away, but this is a community development. It's not a isolated property that you can do whatever you want to in the backyard. Um, so I think that is a big factor here, um, personally. Um, we all, we, we live in a six to twelve acre lots. Uh, we've all moved out there for a reason to have some privacy and some space, but also enjoy our land as well. But, um, we're, we've got to kinda, you know, I guess, look at this as, you know, not so much what it is or what it could be down the road, not just in this piece of, uh, property, but anyone else who has an idea to do something as well that could become a nuisance to the neighborhood. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Everhart?
Uh, I have one. Would it be fair to say that your greatest concern is kind of a slippery slope situation where we condone this and over time the activity increases? And then somebody comes along and says, well, let's turn this into a commercial enterprise or a more serious, uh, you know, uh, competitive aspect and and then you have the precedent of having had a dirt track for many years makes a pretty compelling argument for this is a usage which has been established. Is that what you're really concerned about?
That is definitely a concern. If it becomes something that, more than what it is or more than what it should have been possibly. I, I don't know. Like I said, we've lived there for four years. I never even realized there was a track because like I said, we are probably one of the furthest, uh, lots away from it. But, um, you know, you hear it in the summertime, which like I said, where we're at, it's just a distant kinda, you know, buzzing with the tracks. But like I sa- like I said, if I was living closer, I, I'd probably have a different opinion of it, definitely. Um, but, uh, but yeah, one of my main concerns is value of our homes, you know, because something like this could detract from that, which is a, which is a big concern, um, and then becoming something more than what it is now.
You know, in, listening to some folks comment here, it seems like in their mind, this is almost a necessity. This is an activity which is almost like if you said, we have a baseball diamond, but some people object to the kids out there hitting balls and balls going into the neighbors' lots and so forth. But this seems to be very essential. You yourself said your daughter was a competitive, uh, cyclist and so forth. So.
She was a bike, bike, bike BMX.
Yeah, yeah, BMX.
But still, yeah, not dirt bike, but still, I mean, I understand, I understand the love for doing something like that, you know?
And that sort of confederative environment and you know, I, I think we don't want to throttle something that's a normal family activity. But, uh, we also don't wanna open the door for something that becomes uh, an eyesore and a, a difficult, uh, presence in your neighborhood.
Right.
Might affect property values. Although it's kinda over sold sometimes, I think, but okay, well, I just wanted to clarify your thinking on it.
And ju- just, uh, you know, one thing, you know, I try to look at this from both perspectives, from, you know, neighbors and property owner and I understand both sides, I really do, but, um, I just think that, um, this needs to be a little more refined or, or maybe just some more stringent, uh, guidelines or parameters be set in place instead of just being able to do it. I get it ten to ten, whatever, but I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll be the first to admit, I'm guilty of mowing my grass at eight in the morning, but I don't consider that noise, you know? But, um, yeah, that's really all. I just wanted to share my opinion.
Thank you. Further questions? Thank you, sir, for your comments. The next speaker request form I have is from, uh, Randy Schwindler? Schwindler? Did I say that right?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commission. Uh, Randy Schwindler, I live at two-two eight four-four Gateway Drive. I'm about a half mile from the proposed development or the amendment to the change. I rode dirt bricks, excuse me, I rode dirt bikes all my life. I grew up in a farm, grew up in Winter, South Dakota, just a, you know, a couple of hours from here. My wife and I moved out there about five years ago. We watched them ride their bike all the time, never had an issue with it because it was just one or two kids, family out there or what have you. It has grown. It has grown significantly. Couple of weeks ago, I was talking to my wife, she heard chainsaws. That's about a half mile away from that proposed area. I was like, we hardly have any trees out here. Where's the chainsaws coming from? We figured it out. Again, I don't have a problem with them riding their dirt bikes if it was just one or two or the family, or just a couple of friends across the road. But it appears to me that this is growing significantly. It's going in the direction that that slippery slope that Mr. Coleman talks about. Uh, and that's what I'm afraid of. And the property values, we can argue that all day. We can argue about the dust, uh, the horses, we do all that stuff. But again, it comes down to the noise. It's a community. We should be respectful of everybody else's property. And if we go this route, how can I cannot come forward to you as a commission and say, I wanna put a circus next to, uh, his property? I put a Ferris wheel up. As long as I'm within the ten to ten, I should be good to go. It's not gonna affect anybody. I mean, the noise, okay, I got it. The lights, okay, I got it. But at the end of the day, I'm not gonna affect anybody. Well, I am. I'm affecting my community. And this is what the problem is. I have nothing against them riding their dirt bikes. If it was just one or two or the family. But at the end of the day, they are taking this way outside of just a normal kind of neighborhood. We're talking people coming in from outside the neighborhood and going there and ride their dirt bikes. And this is why I concern this. And I oppose it. And unfortunately, I don't want to do that. I want them to have their dirt track. I want them to be able to ride their dirt bikes on that, their family. But this is getting into what a commercial property. Okay, I don't charge. Now it's commercial. Or I do charge, it's commercial. If I don't charge, it must be residential. I can invite anybody out from outside the state to come out and ride my dirt track. That is my concern. And they cannot address that. And if we allow this to go forward, there's nothing stopping it. Cause we have set that precedent and we have allowed them to do that dirt track and they can invite whoever they want, as many people as they want. And as long as they abide by the ten to ten, they won't have a nuisance complaint from the noise. And I would ask the commission, what if I put a dirt track right next to your house? And follow all the same ordinance? I wouldn't be respectful of you. And this is why I'm asking the commission not to oppose, or excuse me, to oppose this and not to approve this. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair and Commission.
Yeah, a question for Mike.
Give you my experience. Live out in Hill City. Built the house in seventy-nine and about five years ago, uh, a gentleman from back east bought a house next to us and, uh, comes a couple of times a year and he's a gun nut. Now, up to that point, my thought has always been of yours, that it's your property, you can do what you want. All of a sudden, the gun starts. Now his friends come with the guns. And that's just next to us. And I've been to the state's attorney a couple of years ago, excuse me, and asked, you know, what can we do? Well, we can't do anything because everything is legal. It's very disconcerting to try to sit on the, the porch in the evening and, you know, these things go off. So I understand what you're saying. Th- th- and the balance point is I don't know where. I don't know where, but, but I understand exactly what you're saying, but anyhow, thank you.
Mr. Lewis, I, uh, that's what I concern is also too. Where do we stop?
Yeah.
And, and again, I, I truly support them riding their dirt bikes, the family dirt bikes, but it has grown far beyond just a family and a few friends. Right. And thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker request form I have is from, uh, Justin Cookie.
Good morning. Uh, thank you for letting me come up here and speak my piece. So I, I live at, uh, two-two eight four-one Gateway Drive, uh, pretty much the western edge of the neighborhood. Uh, I live about a half mile, right across the street from Mr. Schwindler. And this has grown. Uh, I don't know what, when this picture was taken, but it's, uh, for all intents and purposes, it's an impressive track, but it's, it's a pro-am track and people coming from different states. And people coming from different states. There's been a few times where I've seen anywhere upwards of two to three side by sides, dirt bikes, ATVs. And last year I was keeping track because it is annoying. And then it was every weekend. Uh, sometimes it was just one or two riders. Sometimes it was a group of riders. Um, Sunset Ranch uh was sold to me and I, you know, we all, all our houses are near a half a million. Um, and uh, the properties need to be, from lack of better word, protected. My biggest concerns are, as we've already said, a precedent for setting up whatever we want. If we just ask and no one opposes, then we can just go ahead and build, like Randy said, a Ferris wheel or a shooting range or whatever. There is a dirt track just down the road at the Black Hill Speedway for bikes. So, you know, I don't know what the uh usage policies are for that, but it'd be worth asking. Uh, also liability, if someone were to get hurt, um, they might sue the woodhead. But then if they found out or wanted to, they could sue the road district. And then every resident in that area is going to have to pay the price for that liability. I I don't have, uh, I don't have the money to pay for someone that might die. Like I said, this this picture here does not represent the track very well. There's some, like I said, it's impressive. If I, if I was a rider, I'd want to ride on it, but uh, I'm not and I don't enjoy hearing it every weekend because it is pretty much every weekend during the warm weather. Um, dust. The dust doesn't really affect me, but the houses around it, they get covered. And uh, one of my neighbors sent me a video. And it it just, it's a cloud that goes right over his house. I can hear these in my house. And like I said, I'm a half a mile away. And, you know, not to overshare, but I have some stress and anxiety issues. They get me kind of worked up, so I kind of have to take extra special care in order to keep myself kind of at bay. So there's a lot of us out there that are part of military and uh have similar issues. So, uh, the sound is pretty constant through the summer. So that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions?
Uh, I just one. Um, would you consider this uh a suburban or rural development?
Rural. We all, it's a rural. I mean, it was kind of sold as a horse, horse property hobby farm.
How far are you from Rapid City, actually?
From Rapid?
Yeah.
Rough gas, twenty miles. Yeah. We're about ten miles east of the base. And uh, it's, it was sold as, as a sunset, you know, uh, lots of solitude, quiet, dark, uh, space. So that's why I bought.
You know, the farther you get out, the quieter it gets, but the rules get looser.
It's true.
And I I always caution people about that. The ideal thing is to go out five hundred miles and then then you don't have any problems. But, you know, and that's the crux of this problem to me is it seems rural and it seems like you are searching for a rural experience, in which case I say the rules are going to get pretty loose. But housing is fairly close here. Six acres is not a small lot by any means, but, you know, you you are within, you know, a shout, a shout and a holler of each other if you have to be. So, but I mean, that's the conflict here, right?
Right. Well, most of us still have to work.
Yes, no, I understand that, yeah.
But like I said, you know, I couldn't yell from my house to Brandon's house. I can yell from my house to Randy's house, but uh, it's.
Eventually, you may be able to yell at most of your neighbors.
Well, no, no.
You know, if that develops more, I mean.
Well, the space between the houses that are there are going to stay the same. You know, I have nine acres, Randy has six. Um, I don't know what Brandon's lot is, but, you know. Where we are right now is the way it's going to stay. They are developing further at the south. There's going to be another forty-eight houses. So, so we need to make sure that, you know, we protect that something as much as we can. That's all I have.
Further questions?
I have a question. Question, just about the road district. Are your roads gravelled out there? Is that, okay, that's how they maintain. Thank you.
Yeah.
Exactly my question.
Okay.
And and they are speed controlled. So, but uh, is that it?
I believe so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker request form I have is from Jim Russell.
Good morning. I'm Jim Russell. I live at one five five eight six Lonesome Dove. I am directly right next to Dave's property. Um, the issue I have, the timeline of the track from the previous owner was two thousand and eight, early two thousand and nine, when that little track was installed. It has grown significantly. I love seeing the little kids on there. I am also a state motorcycle safety instructor. I don't like seeing the little kids with the big kids. That's just, as a safety guy, that bothers me. Um, is it my problem? No.
It's their problem.
Okay. But all my windows look directly out onto their property. So if I was to sell my house, I'd ask Dave, hey, don't ride your bikes this week. I'm selling my house.
Let's. And then help me out. Don't turn around and 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 point at him just.
Um, so I ride. I've ridden dirt bikes. I don't ride dirt bikes anymore. I'm a street guy. Um, I don't think street's any safer than dirt, but I do have an issue with the track, the noise. Um, I've looked out my window, seen five or six pickups there with one or two bikes in there. That adds up to a lot of bikes. The little bikes, not an issue. Uh, the big bikes, they're loud. They do create quite a dust cloud. Um, the wife has to shut the windows because she don't like the dust, um, which means I have the dust. So with that, the the property, if you look at Google, it has grown. Um, I've talked to Dave. Um, Dave and I have been served in the military. I'm the president of the road district. I've had one issue with Brandon with the race car. Um, went to talk to him. He wasn't very receptive of, I won't use the language that came out. So he basically, you know, I wouldn't go down there and talk to them. I talk to Dave all the time. I used to. Haven't talked to him in a while because we're both very busy. Any questions for me?
When did you buy your house?
Two thousand and eight. So the previous owner had little kids. Um, there was no track there until late two thousand and eight, early two thousand and nine. Uh, little kids, no issue. The big ones, yeah, it's annoying. It's loud. If I want to barbecue out back, I have to, you know, I can't sit out back and eat if there's a dust cloud coming my way. If it's going the other way, no issue. It's going the other way. Uh, it's just the noise level.
Further questions? Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker request form I have is from Wendy Rosman.
Commissioner members, thank you for your time. I think you've experienced a little bit of neighborhood drama. Um, I have been in Sunset Ranch since July of two thousand and eight, before the P O P U D was established. Um, when we first were, you guys can't be responsible for what, um, the Caskey Homes build the resid- the residents as, but it was supposed to be a quiet horse property. Um, promises always given, none pretty much fulfilled. Um, many neighbors had taken to, just like the prior owners of this property, um, fulfilling those promises to themselves. They wanted the track. When I live at two two eight six six Gateway Drive, so I am uh further down the road on the western side, my back deck does face over that way. Um, I am visually impaired, so I am home all the time. And my home is my s- my my san- sanctuary. And so many evenings I sit on the porch, my back porch too, just enjoy the quiet. And, um, it is, uh, you do hear the noise. It has grown significantly in the past four years since the new owners. Um, as far as property values, I don't think that's where I'm going to be able to tell you. I'm planning, as my husband, when we retired from the Air Force and moved there, I said my next move was to a crematorium. I'm not moving anymore. So that's not my concern, but my concern is, um, they don't stay just on that property. I have seen them racing up and down, testing the bikes on Lonesome Dove. That is a, that is our private, that is our roads. It is gravel. I, my concern is a safety issue. You know, not only for us as residents, if we're out walking our dogs or anything, but also what if something happens to one of those kids or somebody else when they're, um, testing their bikes? So, um, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, um, I know that you were addressing about our covenants. We do have covenants that is enforced by Caskey Homes. If you are wanting to put in a fence or a shop or many other things, we have to do a proposed plan to Caskey Homes for approval, even to change the color of our homes. It's basically, that is their, his version of a, um, oh, HOA, but with him in control. Okay, any questions?
Thank you for that information. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, so you have covenants. Uh, do you have anything in as far as noise or nuisance or anything like that? Or are you just basically fences and colors and things?
Um, he has changed the covenants many times since we purchased the home in two thousand and eight. Um, I understand when we purchased the home, um, we had to have a fence approval to, because we had horses. And we had to do our fence, our proposal for our fence and our barn. Um, his concerns at that time, and I can only ex- um, tell you about my experiences. My barn had to be the same color as my house. Um, my property, my barn could not be within twenty feet of the property line. Um, my fence was supposed to be smooth wire. And he had it all spelled out and everything like that as far as, you know, how far your post had to be and that kind of stuff. Um, as far as usage, you know, I can only attest to what my experience was. I have horses. That was my only main concern was, was I going to be able to have the fence I wanted in a horse barn?
Further questions?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for listening to all of us. It's probably quite a.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Is there still property out there for sale?
Yes, there are several lots still for sale. Um, our property, properties go from, um, six acres or five acre lots all the way up to fourteen acre lots. They are currently, there are some in the first phase that are, there are a few that are still, um, excuse me, for sale. But now they are integrating to, um, developing down there the south. And I think the total plan is to have like around a hundred and forty-eight homes in our development.
The, has the developer mentioned anything about this track?
Um, when I first was talking to Ryan back in two thousand and eight, we had two property owners that had tracks. Um, this particular track was there and then one was further on two twenty-fifth. Am I right? Yeah. Um, and I did address it with Mr. Caskey when he came out to, um, look at my fence. And I said, I thought this was supposed to be a horse property because horses sometimes don't always get along well with motorbikes. And he addressed, he told me that, um, there was, he was working on a P U D and, um, that people could do what they wanted with on their property. That was his stance back in two thousand and eight.
So he was at the time in favor of?
I think, um, my personal, again, I'm trying to be neutral here. My personal perception of Mr. Caskey is he will tell you whatever he likes. He thinks you want to get you to agree to him or not to be confrontational with him.
But he has to sell the property, so he's not going to do anything that he thinks is deleterious to.
Which is why he has the covenants and he is
Right.
who you respond to when you're wanting to do any modifications.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thanks again for your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker request form I have is from Melissa Everhurt.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I can't hear it. My husband's already spoken. I hear it a little bit in the summertime, so I'm not here to complain about the noise or complain about any of it, really. What I'm here to talk about is, you know, like he was talking, my daughter, our daughter raced, um, dirt bikes, BMX, totally different. So you're same kind of track, same kind of track. The track that's there now is more of a pro-am track, almost looks like a sanctioned track. It's it, it's legit. It's legit. My concern is the fencing around it. So if if you guys choose to let it stay here, is there going to be fencing to protect anybody from walking onto that and getting hurt when people come in? People do get hurt. They get hurt just in pedaling BMX. My daughter just had brain surgery in February. Um, it can happen. But what about the insurance liabilities? Because if you, if you go to a BMX track, like the Rapid City BMX track, or, I don't know motocross. I don't know motocross. But if you go, and then if you go to, um, the one that used to be in Box Elder, these things had to be fenced in. They had to be locked off to the public. Granted, we're in a, we are in a subdivision, a community subdivision with homeowners and children and of course the animals. But what about i- if this stays, is there going to be something in place to protect the neighborhood from being responsible? That's my only concern about that. That's it.
Questions? Thank you for your comments. The next speaker request form I have is from Kristen Seguin. Segwin?
Um, I live at twenty-two eight oh eight Gateway Drive, which is directly behind the property. So my fence butts up to their property. Um, and I hate that we're here today. I I wish our neighborhood wasn't in this discord. Um, I don't think any of us want to be here, want to be talking about this. Um, I have, you know, they have some little kids that are out and are riding and that hasn't bothered us to just have one or two little kids out. But it's becoming more and more, um, people that are there, people that are hauling in motorbikes on the back of their trucks. Um, and, you know, when I look at, what we're looking at here is a section two sixteen of the planned development. Um, you know, can they meet those conditions for amendment? And to me, the answer is no. Um, and it's nothing personal with them. It's, we all like to do the things that we like to do on our own property. The problem is, is that most of us, the things we do on our property can be contained within our property. Unfortunately, with the bikes, we get the dust, we get the noise and it's cannot be contained just within their property. like I said, I don't, I don't want anybody to not be able to use their property how they want to, you know, so. So I hate to be here and I hate to be saying no, but I, I don't know what the next thing is. What could it become if it's approved? I fear that it will be more people coming and that it will get worse and it will get worse. Um, where do we stop it? Um, I mean, it's, at sometimes it's to the point where I don't want to be outside. Um, I can't sit on my deck and drink a beer because it's, the noise is quite bothersome. Um, the dust, I can't open my windows to my house because there's dust coming in my house. Um, you know, when we bought the property, we, it was that time and it still is where people are buying properties really quickly. And so you had to act on it quick. So we looked at the property for probably about two minutes. We were in and out and didn't even realize that there was a dirt track behind us. Um, and so I would, I thought that in the covenants, because we were moving into this, you know, district, that there would be something like, hey, you need to sign this saying that you're okay with having a dirt bike and track in your backyard. Uh, but we weren't even aware that that was, um, that it was there and that it was going to be the amount of noise that it has become. Um, I do have a video if anybody wants to see it. Um, my husband and I have been frustrated over the past year. We have complained to Caskey, um, who's the, the guy we're supposed to talk to. He said he was going to talk to them. Um, I don't know if anything ever came of it. I didn't know that we could go through this. I figured it was already zoned. I figured it was already approved through Pennington County. Otherwise, why would they be doing it? Um, so, um, but I do have that video if anybody's interested in seeing it. How long is the video? About sixteen seconds. Oh, yeah.
You do want to see it?
I would like to see it.
Do you, do you have a video? Do you have it on?
Also. So, so, I don't think it's from. Let's see. Yeah, that's mine. Oh, this one yours? Yep.
What's that? Is what?
Yes. Yes.
I also have a couple others from, that are inside my house as well. But it's just hard. We're outside. We're trying to enjoy our property. And there's, you can't even hear to talk. Like I'll yell at my husband when we're trying to talk. So, once again, I have nothing against dirt bikers or, you know, what they're trying to do, but I feel like they're not being very understanding of how their, their hobby and what they're doing is affecting their neighbors. So I would vote no.
Questions? And, and when did you move in?
We've been there about a year and a half.
Okay. Um, when you moved in, were you made aware that the subdivision was a planned unit development?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Sir, please come up.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Community Commissioner. I'm Mr. Woodhead. I actually own the property. I bought the house back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen with the pre-existing track on the track. Um, I talked to the previous owners. He said that when him and Caskey had it all, he said it was fine because it's on his track. You cannot refer to the pud because it's on his private property. I had to get approval for my shop. Talked to him then about the track. And he said it was fine because it's on my private property. The common lot that they refer to, that the track is supposed to be on, is in a natural saloon with their stream going through it. The houses around it have, the land around it has been sold to local neighbors. And also there is no easement or signs posted to enter any of the common lots. There's supposed to be eighty acres out there for horses and arenas and barns. And none of that's posted anywhere per this pud. Um, nobody in the neighborhood besides Mr. Russell has ever talked to me about this track. The noise, the dust. Yes, kids start off on small bikes. As they get older, what do you do? Bikes get bigger. I'm sorry. It's just, it's the natural beast of the kids growing up, of the sport. Um, I just got a letter from Sunset Road District stating that you can ride your quads and dirt bikes on the roads. So the dust and noise is still going to be through the neighborhood because the road district is allowing them to ride on the roads. You drive down a gravel road, you get dust. Yes, they are trying to maintain it through mag water. But since I've been there, only one person's ever come to talk to me. That's Mr. Russell. We are willing to work with anybody. And I'm sorry that we're here. You know, we're limit, we will, we don't, it's, it will never be a commercial track. It will always be a personal track. It's for my son, my grandkids. Yes, my son brings three or four friends out. People say they haul bikes in and out on trucks. Well, if they're for, riding with my son, they have to get there somewhere. We live twenty miles from Rapid City. I'm five miles from New Wonderwood. I'm ten miles from Box Elder. I have, like my son's girlfriend said, a kid that comes out and ride that had a brain injury still. And his dad allows him, which is Ward Wassenberger. And he comes out with his grandkid and rides. Yes, they have Nebraska license plates because he owns a dealership in Chattanooga, Nebraska, but he actually lives in Rapid City. So people complain about it getting bigger. It won't get bigger. And we, we only control who will ride the track. We, it's not a free-for-all. And if you read the pud and what's that states in there, that the common lot is open up to all Sunset Ranch individuals and their families and their friends. So you think the noise is worse with us? Now you got side-by-sides, ATVs and all this other stuff over in the common lot. Who's going to maintain it? Who's going to control it? And that's the reason why Caskey actually has not done it. I mean, I'm here. I'm sorry that we're here. I'm sorry that we're having to deal with this. But this is something I did not build. And if you go back to two thousand and ten on Google Earth, the track hasn't changed. It's been that size since two thousand and ten. Yes, I redesigned it to take it away from my fence line. And if somebody would come up and say, hey, can you please move your track in a little bit? Or do this, or do that, or can you ride between these hours? And Caskey wrote in the, the, uh, thing, quiet hours from ten PM to ten AM. We're going to work with anybody. But nobody's ever come and talked to us. That's all I really have to say.
Okay.
Is anybody having anything for-
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Before we allow, I've been waiting for a long time for some questions in regards. You're the representative of the property?
I own the property, yes, sir.
Okay. I'm asking if he, if he wants to talk before, but I need to speak to this gentleman.
Yeah.
So let's, let's keep with you. And then if there's other people that wish to come up and, and address things that have been said, we'll, we'll do that one at a time in an orderly fashion. Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, and don't get me wrong, because I'm terribly troubled by the fact that there's no Caskey representative here standing up to speak. That troubles me a lot as a commissioner. And as I understand it from the testimony that's come from those that support you, the, the track's been there since two thousand eight?
Rough, the reason only about the house in six. He said it started seven, eight timeframe, but on Google Earth, two thousand and ten, because it goes from six to ten, and two thousand and ten, it shows the whole track. But he said he started riding the track back in when he's building the house.
All right. And then you, uh, moved in or, or moved to the property, uh, sixteen or seventeen?
No, yeah, around fourteen, fifteen.
Fourteen or fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you know about that there was a track lot, a common lot?
No.
Did you sign some purchase documents that told you to go back to Caskey for things?
No. Uh, they, I got something in the mail from him when he sends out his yearly, uh, changes.
Do you own the property or are you buying it through somebody else?
I own the property.
Okay. Um, and I can understand that. Um, just for the boards, uh, the commissioners, uh, thoughts. Uh, there's many times builders are very familiar with, uh, covenants and homeowners associations. There's many times the builder has to reach a certain plateau, a trigger area in the covenants before they turn those covenants over to the homeowners.
And then also, he is building, putting in a hundred or two houses south of two twenty-ninth as we speak.
He may have to a certain percentage before he steps away from being the one in charge of everything, is what I'm suggesting.
Right. He's currently building houses right now.
That's one of the reasons why I'd like to see him here and see what are in or how those documents were written in regards to this property. Um, but one of the things that troubles me is the commons one has BMX. Do you allow BMX on your track?
No. Nobody's ever asked.
So you're not trying to produce a common service? You're only trying to produce a spot for-
My kids, my grandkids.
Your children, your friends and those that would ask you-
Yes, sir.
-to use your track?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Further questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Does anyone else?
I have a question for staff when you're done with the public.
I do too, maybe.
I do as well. Brittany, can you come back up?
So a landowner, a property owner inside of a, a PUD can file for an amendment to the PUD? Like, I live in one. I can maybe have it amended so I can have chickens on my lot?
It's for individual lots. So with some of the concerns that we've been listening to today. So if they get one on their lot, if a neighbor comes and asks for one on their lot, they could ask for one on their, and so on and so forth.
So why is that?
It's basically a conditional use permit is essentially what it is.
Interesting.
Uh, my question was, uh, so if somebody moves out onto a six acre lot and they decide they're going to ride their dirt bike up in their property with their kids, they have to get a conditional use permit?
It would depend. On this one, we have a-
What I'm asking for is what's the trigger that says this is not just some sort of common activity on the property by the landowner? And I think it's fair to say his extended family and something that requires a change of usage on, within the PUD. Uh, I mean, I guess I'm wondering at what point, if, if this guy only had two kids and they rode around, is that, does that trigger the legal mechanism that requires that he get? I mean, I, you know, you see what I'm saying? Because we have an activity here that is pretty modest. Now, if some people are complaining and I, I can, I sympathize, but it's not like he's operating a large scale. Uh, I mean, at what point do we, is it just, just whatever moves us to say, it's getting out of hand?
Well, I would say that it's basically, when you look at it, it's more than just driving around. I mean, there's jumps. There's, if you look at the pictures, you go out to the aerials. It's constructed dirt track. It's not just going out in your backyard and driving around. It's a little different than that. So to me, it's a use issue, whether or not it's allowed or not allowed. Um, when I looked at what was allowed in the district overall and how properties were used, that's why staff recommended to not-
What you're saying is the creation of some kind of formal or, uh, formal event kind of? In other words, if he went out there and just was driving over rough terrain, natural terrain as you would if you went out in the hills, that wouldn't constitute then, uh, that kind of usage?
Correct.
Okay, so he's out there on pretty flat ground and he's made some changes. And, and if he were to wipe that out and say, well, we just ride around out there in the brush and-
So there is other concern from our office as far as stormwater permits, erosion, sediment control, dust control that would come along with it if it is permitted. We'd have to come back with conditions to address those issues.
But once again, you don't have any standard by which you measure how much, how, how runoff, dust, et cetera, affects. I mean, at what point, there's got to be kind of a, a throttle point at which you-
Irregardless on this, he disturbed over ten thousand square feet of dirt. So period, he needs a stormwater permit, period.
Okay. So, uh, okay, I-
But you're creating dust.
Okay, I just want to make sure there's some kind of-
Correct.
-trigger here that is, okay.
Go ahead, Ben.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So from my point of view, um, reviewing both our ordinances and state law, um, at a certain point, yes, you can ride your bikes on your own property if you're in ag land, if you don't have a track. But at a certain point, it does become a legal nuisance. Um, so when you've got noise that pretty much the entire neighborhood can hear, that's when it becomes an issue for me legally. Um, and in terms of, I've heard a lot of conversation about the grandfathering and it's been there for so long and blah, 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 blah. Well, it's not grandfathered because it was never legal to begin with. And that's the issue that I have with it.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
For Brittany. I'm going to make this the second question. I was going to ask you about Caskey's involvement. But it appears from our documents that we were given to review that the Board of Commissioners, uh, approved this PUD in November tenth, two thousand eight. And that's what's in here. So I assume it's got to be somewhere around it. And it probably went through the Planning Commission before it went to the board. Would that not be a correct assumption?
That's correct.
And there's a certain amount of rules and understanding that were put in to print in two thousand eight. It would appear to me, and that's where I'm going to come, have you had any follow-up from the Caskey Corporation about this?
No.
How in the devil can I make an accurate decision and not waste these folks' time? If he, they don't stand up, we don't know. In other words, he could have been selling lots before two thousand eight and he was required by the sales documents at some time to produce a PUD, of which then he did legally. That's what I'm suggesting he did here. And he can come and tell me that I'm not suggesting correctly. But if he did that, then he left rules in there that said it doesn't have to become a homeowners association or nobody's in charge but him until I sell three quarters of the properties. Sixty percent. I don't think there's any state law that requires what they write in there. I, I don't believe from my past experience with homeowners associations and covenants. So the whole thing rests on whoever is Caskey's representative on this. If they allow these other things and we're not covering this, there's some recourse here for people. We've got a decision to make on what's right and wrong based upon what was done November tenth, two thousand eight. And without additional input from him to change my mind, and that, that's all we can go by.
And I did, oh, Commissioner Johnson, I did review some of the, um, minutes from the past meetings. I don't think that Mr. Caskey ever agreed to construct it. He just said that they could use that lot if somebody else wanted to. That was my, you know, what I took from-
Sure, if they became a homeowners association and they paid the development.
That was the way that I read. So that was my-
The only thing they don't usually do on those sort of things in developments is pay for the well. But they'll get them, they'll only make a well capable of covering to the point where they get out of it. And then the homeowners have got to buy the additional wells to cover for the new people. That's, it's just, there's systems in these whole things. And what I'm suggesting is we're somewhat hamstrung by what he filed or the- somewhat hamstrung by what he filed, uh, or the corporation or whoever filed it to make it a PUD in November tenth, two thousand eight. A- and I don't mind being told I'm wrong, I'm just trying to weed my way through all this. We've got a certain amount, uh, we've got a certain amount of opposition, we've got a certain amount of support, can't say I blame either side at this point without talking to them. I think Kaski's gotta stand up and at least tell us all, we all owe it here and from it. So my suggestion is I'm gonna move that we continue it until the Kaski representative steps forward and tells us what are we looking at here?
Further questions for staff?
But you know, I...
I'd like a sec, I'd like a second to the motion, I'm moving that we continue this.
So you are making a motion right now?
Yes, this is a motion that we continue this. I hate to waste these folks' time, but there needs to be a little bit more information before I cast my vote.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion?
Just, I was going to say, I'm curious at this point with the lots that are still for sale, what's going along with those? I mean, is it the same sort of thing or has he adjusted that or, or we, what's, what's he promising now for the, the new lots? I don't know.
I'm, uh, I, I share your review of the situation, Charlie. Um, in two thousand and eight, it sounds like this came to a head, in two thousand and eight, there was a decision that was made in the, in the PUD that says if, if we're gonna do a BMX track, motocross and ATV track, that it should be on lot sixteen of lot six, not, not on anywhere else. And so for those of you that, that are not in favor of this track, note that you're currently living in a subdivision that has a PUD that allows that use on us, on one of the lots in the subdivision that you live in. And so, and then I, I also understand, I've been doing this since two thousand and eight on my lot, why can't I do this? Why can't I have this, uh, enjoyment of my lot? I specifically moved out here to do this. I hear that and I understand all of that, but I'm, 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 I'm reading through this and I'm thinking to myself, in, in two thousand and eight, there was a decision that was made that these sorts of things are gonna happen on lot sixteen. And that, that, those were the rules and the fact that they happened outside of lot sixteen is, is not really okay. The developer should have said our PUDs is this. So I, 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 I share your, your thoughts, Charlie, on the matter.
Mr. Chair, I was gonna throw in one more thing that perhaps you folks did as well. I backed off on Rapid Map, there has to be five or six other locations that obviously from Rapid Map had tracks on them. Now, was that the basis in two thousand eight or was that two years ago? See, that's what's bugging me, so.
We don't know that.
That, there's, and two thousand eight versus two years ago is a lot of difference of what's going on, i- it directly relates to today. So that's why I wanna hear from them and that's why I support the motion. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So I'm gonna support the motion, but do we have any authority to require Kaskis to show and? Okay, I'm seeing Megan shake her head, no, over there.
I can ask.
We can ask him if he will come, but he doesn't have to.
Further discussion? So there was some hands that were raised, I don't want you to go away thinking that you didn't get, um, uh, your, your voice. Um, normally after the motion is made, we, we typically do the discussion up here on the board, so I'm gonna, uh, vary here a little bit, um, before we vote and, and we'll have people come back up one at a time as I call on you, um, so let's, let's start that. Go ahead, you, yep.
One of the questions I have might have be for the attorney, um, so our neighbor received a letter and his was rescinded. So as far as discrimination, ethics and that go, how does it work that our neighbor's letter was rescinded when, if the track itself is the problem, the physical structure, that his letter got rescinded and not ours?
I don't know what specific issue that you're talking, is this from the county?
Our ordinance enforcement officer can speak to it because he's met with that landowner.
Okay.
I would, I would like to let Dwayne answer that question.
Okay, so we'll try to get your question answered. Dwayne, can you come up please and answer that question? Do you have other questions?
Um, I also would like to note that a lot of the people on the west end of the development mentioned, um, that the Bandit Speedway has a dirt bike track and I would also venture to say that that track causes a lot of noise that they're hearing and a lot of the dust that is affecting their houses, along with we do live on gravel roads.
Yeah, so.
So the, the dust can come from anywhere and everywhere.
All, all of those items I think were, were noted and, and Charlie also mentioned, uh, the, the review of the neighborhood on Google Earth, so I think everyone's aware of that. Thank you. Go ahead, Dwayne.
Morning Board, I'm Dwayne Allen from the, uh, Planning and Zoning Ordnance Officer. Uh, the answer to that question is we did take a look at the property out there, uh, then I spoke with our deputy director, Jason, on the issue, looked at, uh, the property that was out there and what was going on with it and after talking with the landowner, that, uh, track is not really being used at all. It's overgrown along with, I know there's several other tracks that are with you on Google Earth, those tracks are mostly overgrown also, very little of any use at all and that was why that letter was rescinded after I spoke with Jason about that. Because of it's not really, it's not being used in conjunction with the other track and, and it is overgrown.
So it's semi-abandoned is what you're saying?
They said they do use it from time to time for their grandkids when they come out, but it's not very often, so that's why, after speaking with the deputy director, we decided that.
So if we decide to ride around our track and not on our track, since the track itself is considered the problem in this instance, would our letter get rescinded if we choose to not ride on the physical track that is there because the cost associated with reclaiming the surface is gonna be significant?
I cannot answer that question.
I don't know, I don't know if I have an answer for your question exactly. Um, there are stormwater requirements in the state or, or in the county, um, that have to do with the amount of disturbed area. It sounds like some of the adjacent tracks are maybe somewhat overgrown and not, um, in current use. Um, and I, and I guess I don't, I don't have a specific answer. You're asking if you don't ride on your track and you ride on the other parts of your property? Is that your question?
Correct, because the whole issue of this amendment is for the physical track.
So that goes to the question that Jim had, when, when, when does it, when does it start as, as a, as a track if, as opposed to someone, uh, just riding around in their large residential lot?
Exactly.
I don't think we have an answer for you here today on that, I'm sorry.
It would definitely be something we would want it looked into as this proceeds further. And if, um, we do have to take our track down, can we move the dirt to the community lot and build our track there?
Mr. Chair. So it depends on, on certainly if we get any response from the Kaski, because again, uh, we, we have a lot designated and then we don't and we have a homeowner that's venturing out on their own to use it on their own. So whether they ride around the edge of it or they ride through the center of it, uh, as long as they don't move enough dirt, uh, that it does take, uh, additional permits that are in gar, in regards to other items. Some of that rests on what I'm asking for here is to see, now, if they come back and don't respond, then you and I are gonna still be sitting here without an answer. That'll answer your question.
Thank you.
And I would just like to reiterate, Megan Krueger again with the state's attorney's office, even if you're just riding on your land, if you've got a hundred people doing it and you don't have a track, it can still become nuisance under law.
Okay.
Also, I know when we submitted all the paperwork, we had to quote unquote, like, provide a way to compromise, um, if we were allowed to keep the track or we did, um, and also she said it was gonna be a case by case basis, so if the neighbor wanted to add a track, they would have to apply for it, all of this. Um, so with that being said, we did, when we sent this thing, we did provide how we would only allow up to five bikes. We would, um, take, I don't know if we can take a poll or how we would wanna do it to provide hours and days of riding and we also purchased the water truck to maintain and keep the dust down as much as we can. Um, we did, we are taking actions to try to be more compliant with the neighborhood and be respectful of everybody and all of their hobbies and schedules. Um, so that's definitely something that I think was failed to mention is that we did provide that, um, to the commission and it is something that if we get to keep our track, we will, I don't know if we can get it in writing in the PUD or how that works, but we did provide that additionally.
I, I believe that we have it in the packet here, there was a written statement in here that indicates some hours of operation.
Yep.
It indicated a maximum of five bikes or riders to be on the track at a time and it says that you guys would continue to maintain the track, uh, that consists of disking and watering regularly to prevent dust. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, it was in the packet that everyone got.
And then, um, it's also when these people come over, they might bring two or three bikes, but they're only gonna ride one at a time and the track is not big enough to have ten bikes at one time, so there might be ten bikes on the property, heck, we have ten bikes in our garage, but they're not all being used on the track at the same time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Yes, she, uh, just confirmed, uh, bef, before this was even, uh, an issue, we were looking at watering systems, stuff like that to, to, to keep the dust down, um, you know, because we are in a drought and I understand everybody doesn't like dust. I mean, our, our house gets dusty, we have to dust, I mean, that's, but it's also dust from the road and the track and we're gonna do everything we can to prevent as much as we can. Um, you know, and I guess that's all I really have to say is that, um, yes, it did get out of hand with more and more people coming, but, uh, the track is gonna go back to being, you know, a smaller number of people out there at a certain time, um, you know, and we're, we're looking at that and I was also curious if you guys could pull up an overview just to see how many different tracks are just adjacent to us, I mean, there's four of them, you know, so I'm not...
And that was already mentioned here, people can do that here after the meeting, I don't...
Yep, and so, I mean, if you wanna go back to twenty ten to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, um, you can see that the track hasn't changed in size. So that's all I got today.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I know there was additional hands, yes, sir.
Seems like the voice of Kaski would be from his covenants and there's, there's nothing saying that you can't have a, a track, says you can't have broken down stuff in your yard, motorcycles, cars, trucks. Um, our, maybe our realtor did a better job, we knew there was a track when we moved in, in August of twenty fifteen, I thought I could have a track of my own, so fault of me, I thought I could have expanded, take out a post or we would have had a clean shot right through. Um, so I, I get some, some people don't like the noise, um, you, you ask frequency, I, I would listen to these bikes run every day because I like it. I, I love seeing the kids out there learning and riding and we, we've gone out and ate on our porch, if the wind will ever quit, we would do that and watch the bikes ride.
Thank you for your comments. Now, there was a hand in the back, please come forward, sir.
Government's, uh, number thirteen states.
I'm gonna slow you down just a little bit, you gotta note that the Pennington County Planning Commission, we are not the enforcement for covenants.
Right.
Those are a private agreement between you guys and, and your association and/or builder or whatever state that it's in, there's been some comments here tonight on that, but go ahead.
It's just about noise and nuisance. Uh, it says, "No noxious or offensive trade or activity as defined by law shall be carried upon any lot within the development, nor shall anything be done which may become an annoyance or nuisance as defined by law to the development or individuals residing or owning property therein." So it is a nuisance, um, it's not enjoyed by everybody, they may limit the bikes to five at a time on the track, but there are more than, more than five bikes running typically as they're going, uh, maybe around the track or whatever, but the liability is, is a huge issue for me. The noise pollution, huge issue for me, the dust is not that huge of an issue, but like I said, I live a half a mile away and I can hear it in my house. But I also can't afford, you know, a lawsuit, uh, based on someone else's recreational habits. As far as the Buck's Elder track goes, it's about eight miles away, uh, can't really hear it. I can see the dust because we have great views, but, um, that's not a, that's not an issue for us in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of things. So there's been a couple, to say that this track has expanded greatly is a huge overstatement. Uh, I've never seen a UTV or another ATV on that track, nor have I seen very many of them in and out of the Woodheads property. So this is a motorcycle only track? The UTVs and the ATVs driving up and down the road at probably ten mile an hour over the speed limit cause just as much dust and just as much of a nuisance as any of them bikes ever do? And the Buck's Elder track, it would be hard for that to be eight to ten miles away from our development considering that our development is only six miles from Buck's Elder, so the track, Buck's Elder track is probably, as the crow flies, less than three, pretty easy, I would think, from our place and, I don't know, as though it's ever bothered me either, so that's really all I have.
Thank you for your comments.
I just wanna say, I think he brought up a good point that the Buck's Elder track is only, what do you say, two miles away? So that's a great opportunity for people who want to ride bikes in the community to go there.
Thank you.
The Buck's Elder track is only open, um, they just opened last weekend and it costs money to go there and our eight-year-old niece doesn't have a driver's license.
Thank you. Current motion on the floor is to continue this, um, this, uh, minor planned unit development, PU twenty-two dash zero seven, further discussion?
Purchase is a discussion, um, and based upon your contact from the planning department, since we know we cannot require that, I would think, uh, the two weeks is fine with me, it's gonna, that we're pretty much gonna know whether they're gonna come here and talk to us or not, um, but I did want people to know we're somewhat limited by whatever is already in our records. So that was where I was going with it and, and two weeks is fine, I, I apologize for, these folks are very, uh, committed to whatever side they are on the issue, but I think it's important. Thank you.
Good with the two weeks as the second?
Yeah, two weeks is, I should have put that into my motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I would, I'm gonna support the, the motion here, um, I have a long background too of motorcycles and BMX and developments and dust and some of that stuff that will hold for the two-week, um, extension and see what we can talk about then.
Thank you. Brittany has further discussion?
Just one question for staff, so with the continuance, do you, would the commission like staff to propose conditions if in the event they would like to recommend approval of the track? So for the next, uh, staff report, you would have proposed conditions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'd like to leave it exactly where it's at, so we're not trying to rock any boats. I think I would be very specific in a, of a written, uh, notice to them and send it so you know you get, they received it, return receipt, and if it doesn't materialize, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor of continuing minor planned unit development amendment, PU twenty-two dash zero seven for two weeks, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item fifteen, however, I would propose a ten-minute recess. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Ten minutes, so it's eleven thirty, we'll start back up at eleven forty.
I'm just saying.
All right, um, I think everyone's back, let's go ahead and get started and get through the rest of the items here, uh, we're on item fif- Get through the rest of the items here. Uh, we're on item fifteen.
Item fifteen is ordinance amendment O A twenty-two dash zero four for Pennington County. To amend section three oh four mobile homes of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh, this is to amend sections of the P C Z O section three oh four to allow a licensed contractor and engineer or architect certification in lieu of a HUD label. And to add a minimum square footage in lieu of a minimum length of a mobile home. Uh, the reason for this exception came about uh because of a request that was put in front of the Board of Commissioners for a mobile home. That was did not that was from nineteen seventy-five that had been redone that met. Requirements but could not get a building permit because of the pre HUD label. So this is an exception to allow pre HUD mobile homes that are in good repair and that still meet the requirements to still be able to get a building permit. So this was brought forward in front of his direction from the board. And then under item three, under the length, um, that was uh we have gotten several requests in our office. For these new modular homes, new governor's homes, they're making their twenty-two by forty. Well, they wouldn't meet the fifty-six foot length. So as the exception, uh, we would allow it if they are exceeding that seven hundred and eighty-four square feet. So those are the two, because there really isn't a mechanism to allow those kind of mobile homes without these exceptions. So.
Okay. Questions for staff and ju- just the redlined art items or the changes, correct?
Yes, those are the only two changes in this section.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Uh, licensed contractor. Was that a license because of our county, our license laws that would would qualify?
Yes, so we have a licensing requirement is the same as the city of Rapid City. So if you're licensed in the city of Rapid City, you have reciprocity with the county. So cuz we can see their licensing or you have to get licensed separate in the county, which it's the same requirements. There's a test, there's a class A, a class B, class C type license depending upon whether it's residential or commercial. Um, but yes, we have a licensing procedure.
And that would cover, they could look at it and accept that then.
Correct.
All right, all right.
Further questions? Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, uh, your exception there for that, I um, I think you could all but scrub out the licensed contractor. Because I doubt whether they'd be in a position to step forward and state that. Uh, without being in a lot of trouble with their own professionalism, insurance. And which case then it falls to the other two categories which end up, and I just wanted to note it to you. I I'm not opposed to it. It it's gonna be expensive to put it, get somebody put a stamp on.
So you don't think we should have the from a licensed contractor, certified professional?
I think you can give the licensed contractor, get it less expensive and drop the other two, the certified professional engineer or architect. You couldn't afford the architect, so you can cross him off. And the engineer's stamp, which would be a good legal one under the state system. I'd do away with him too because they were gonna hesitate and they're gonna want some drawings to go along with it to show why. So get it back to the licensed contractor and give him a little criteria to work with. What exactly you wanna know? Are they reading a tag or is he doing to do some load measurements? And are those load measurements based upon what just what he's seeing in place?
So those construction standards are pretty laid out in that code under the HUD.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get. I'd drop the other two is is my thought because it could get difficult. And and I think you're trying to help yourself out from what went on in the Board of Commissioners meeting here not long ago too. Because you've still got some of the old seventy-two flood ones around too, don't you?
Yes, but those uh anything that's moving in that's new or that hasn't had a permit after the date that we updated our ordinance in February. Wouldn't be able to be moved into the county now.
And is, I mean, the but you're the intent of this is to make sure that if something was manufactured prior to this, that that somebody in the know. Looks at it and says, yeah, it's okay or it's not okay. So I don't know about dropping all those people. I think that that the intent is that so someone's gonna take responsibility for saying that something less than our standard is okay. And I think that that's what the intent here is.
I would agree with that. Um, I I mean, if you have it as licensed contractor, certified professional engineer or architect. That means that you can do any of the three. You don't have to do all three. Um, so essentially whoever is requesting this chooses who they wanna use. Whether it's an engineer, whether it's an architect, or whether it's one of our licensed contractors within the county. Um, so this gives them a little bit more flexibility to choose who they want to use to say that the structure is safe. And meets the standards of uh the National Manufacturing Manufactured Housing Construction and Safety Standards Act of nineteen seventy-four.
And I would agree.
I brought up is as a contractor and I was a commercial general contractor and we did millions of dollars worth of work i- in one time. There's no way I would step forward and agree to that. Because I wouldn't even be insured by my uh professional insurance while I'm doing it.
So Charlie, are.
Unless I hired an engineer to do it, you can't do it. You're not gonna be able to do it.
Charlie, or what you s- you're saying is that no licensed contractor or engineer or architect is going to be even willing to do this?
No, I'm gonna say you can remove licensed contractor without changing that particular I. You can remove that and leave it to certified professional engineer or architect and then that it's going to be expensive.
Okay, so you would your preference would be to leave out licensed contractor?
Mm-hmm, cuz you're how, one, you'd have to even ask him whether he's got professionalism, insurance to be able to do it.
So when we first looked at this, we originally looked at doing it as a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Again, but then, you know, as talking with staff, we were like, do we wanna be bringing these? Then the planning commission would be making that decision whether these were safe. One and two, it would put it back on these. Why are we reviewing someone's home? Um, you know, cuz that's kinda why we got rid of the conditional use permits. Because as long as I've been here since two thousand eight, I've never seen the planning commission deny a C U P for a single wide mobile home. So there was really, you know, not, I, it wasn't, there wasn't a use for it, I guess, is what we were saying and.
And then on the other side, because it would be the planning commission that's making the decision on whether the structure is safe or not. If it ends up not being safe, potential liability.
I'll go out in a different direction. They're constantly changing when it comes to mobile home, mobile structures. Just even the tie-down procedure for weather conditions. And that there's more than one for certain loads. And then the loads are determined by engineers, not by contractors. Again, and I can't see you uh to stick up for what you're saying. You can't chase down manufacturers and whether they have certifications on an older or they met it and they just don't have a tag. I don't see asking you either. I'm just trying to say this is not cheap. From what I heard at the meeting that you're trying to get around, this is not inexpensive to do that. To try to certify one that isn't properly labeled or certified.
And should we be certifying it?
Yeah, we shouldn't.
Some some, I mean, that that's the in the intent of this exception is that it's old. No one really knows.
I I was at that meeting and the Board of Commissioners asked our planning department to look into to making this. So that people that do step into these situations have an alternative way around it. And I'm just saying it's that's not an easy thing to do. That's not an easy statement, just go out and do it.
I'm the, I think the cost of the ask is justified.
The one they did it for was a was also a financial hardship too, wasn't it?
Yes, and I believe that one has been upgraded.
Yeah.
Of the three, I would agree with you.
Just throwing in what I know. I'm just trying to say even to get an engineer to approve, let's say he had a set of roof trusses. And you really wanted to meet a requirement for an overhang around your house or something. I'm just pulling something out of the air. To get them to do the drawings, they're gonna submit a drawing with their stamp on it saying that this is correct. That's an expensive matter with a structural engineer. We're not talking an engineer that's that's designing the duct system for your heating. And that's to me is expensive, but we're a structural engineer is an expensive un- undertaking.
But if you're a licensed contractor and you firmly believe that you understand the National Manufactured Housing Construction and Safety Standards. You're saying that the licensed contractor wouldn't wouldn't sign something that says I've 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 refurbished this mobile home.
No, I was saying my insurance would not have allowed it under my professionalism. Uh, I could have gotten a lot of trouble if it failed. In other words, I'd be without insurance on it if I ventured out to do it.
And and what would that contractor have to do to give proof, provide proof? What what's the proof? Is he just gonna say this is okay?
That's basically what the HUD label says.
Now, see, that would be what I'd be afraid of. And then three months down the road, we get three feet of snow and the roof caves in.
Yeah, but the contractor, no.
Contractor goof.
Can I read in what we did as a contractor when you ran into this exact situation? We built twice as strong as what anything that was going to be challenged. It was that simple. I mean, we'd throw in steel if we had to. Uh, because you can't, as a contractor, without having certain parameters of expertise and and behind you. You just can't venture out in a professional statement like this, that you're certifying that this is good. The roof is strong enough, the frame's strong enough, you know. You just don't do it.
I think that the only alternative to this is to do a C U P. And I think that staff is not super happy about doing it that way. I have concerns about the commission making that decision on whether that structure is safe or not. Um, this is the closest that you can get to allowing these structures and ensuring that they're safe. Without the liability then later on falling on the county. Because that other issue that we had talked about during the Board of Commissioner meeting. I was concerned about the safety of that structure and whether it was going to be safe in the future. And if the board decided that it was safe, what the board's liability is going to be.
Can I ask you a question on that? If if the unit's already here versus one that's being brought in that like would, like Brittany was implying, then. Why do we need the construction safety standards? In other words, if it's just being changed as far as ownership on a property or the renter or whoever.
So Charlie, I think I can, I can explain to you.
Yeah.
Those, all of those structures that were in prior to our ordinance change are grandfathered. So they were permitted in some way or, I mean, usually they're going to be permitted in some way.
Units that were here.
Yeah, just let me finish. Or they were in the.
I didn't understand which units.
Before nineteen ninety-four.
Okay.
So if they were in the county before nineteen ninety-four. Or if they were put in the county betw- before five twenty-six of twenty twenty-one and they're permitted, then they're grandfathered. So this is not going to apply to anything but structures that are being moved from one property to another property.
Moving into the county.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
For new buildings.
But then that that unit was already here.
Then they don't have to. But it's not grandfathered anymore. If you move it, if you change it, it's not grandfathered.
Okay.
That makes sense.
I I think it's okay as written. That's that's my opinion.
Leave it go.
I agree.
Any other comments? Staff's recommendation is to approve ordinance amendment O A twenty-two dash zero four. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item sixteen.
Item sixteen is ordinance amendment O A twenty-two dash zero five for Pennington County to amend section three sixteen telecommunications facility. Uh, this was an amendment to require that all telecommunications facilities obtained a telecommunications facilities permit or C U P. Um, this one, this ordinance was pretty much completely rearranged. Um, so the language in and of itself hasn't changed much. Um, there are two areas that are significantly different um with that. One is in the decommissioning. Um, prior in our prior ordinance, we had no section on decommissioning, any kind of requirements for decommissioning of these facilities. Um, so it's similar to our solar and our wind energy where we require surety or bond for the decommissioning. Um, that wasn't required prior to in these telecommunications facilities. And prior to that, there was some administrative review based upon whether it was on a unplanted egg zoned property. Um, well, we ran into a couple of issues um with some that were done through an administrative review. Um, where we had neighbors and things that felt like they didn't have a voice. Um, they didn't, they had some concerns that they didn't know that they were going to be constructed. Um, the requirements for the administrative review from a staff perspective were quite cumbersome. Um, so we met on several occasions and discussed as staff and decided that um. We felt like because of the controversy sometimes that surrounds them, that a telecommunications facility permit should be required, which is essentially a C U P. Um, for all facilities. Because we had ones that were, if they were under one ninety-nine and they were stealth and they were in the zoning district, then they didn't need to. You just had to, you know, let the surrounding property owners know and give them ten days. If you don't hear from them, then it's good to go. So um, we just felt this was a better way to to work through the system with them. I have a question.
Go ahead, Karen.
Um. In the existing ordinance, we have a new telecommunications facilities that are less than sixty feet in height. Should be permitted in any zoning distant district. Is there anything about those heights in here anymore? It's just the three hundred feet?
No, it's they're all going to be uh telecommunications facilities permits and the max is three hundred feet. So they would have to come in front. It's it's basically a C U P. So they'll, the request will come in front of you. It'll be a telecommunications facilities permit for a whatever height tower and whatever district. Just like you would have that kinda use in um.
But so we weren't really gonna have a way to turn it down if it's meets the, you know, how how much ground? How far it would fall on the ground if it fell over? Could we have this probably coming up in our neighborhood sometime in the near future where they wanna build a three hundred foot tower? And it's a residential neighborhood.
I mean, there's still some discretion under the conditional use permit process. So under the T C permit process, you still have some discretion. And there's still standards as far as aesthetics, where they are priority in zoning districts and things like that. So those are still in, they're still there. It's just that we're not doing it by administrative review versus a T C permit. We're just do them all as a T C permit. So those standards are, we didn't remove any of those standards or those requirements. We're just saying that all of them require a T C permit instead of if you're this, then it's this. If you're this, then it's this. There's still that priority. So and there's still those requirements that you can't have more in one mile. So if you have another one that has a higher priority and they come in around the same time, then the one in the higher priority takes precedence. So those are those types of things that were not removed from that ordinance.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
You and I spoke just shortly.
Mm-hmm.
The telecommunications, just add a quick little history before I state my thought on it. That was a fifteen, sixteen person-sized committee, went on for over a year. It involved engineers, it involved people from the industry, it involved the staff from our planning department as well as commission members. And I thought it was a pretty well-put-together ordinance at the time. Most of the things that are in here are the same things that I grumbled about, about our uh emergency services towers. That we were being included on towers for emergency services, especially the three hundred footer. That's still gonna be uglier and thin uh right alongside three eighty-five. And they haven't even got it up yet. But that still goes back and I pointed that out to you. If we were look at this, this actually defines it better. In that they've gotta show a scaled photo of what that thing's gonna look like above the treetops. Uh, I still suggest that the photo that we looked at had nothing to do with the three hundred foot tower when we reviewed and approved that. But we mostly approved it for emergency services, so we looked the other way of this whole thing anyway. Three hundred foot tower. I don't know. I I I don't, I understand what you're saying about changing how you uh permit it. But I don't understand that that needs to write a whole new section. That's where I was coming from.
Well, the section hasn't really changed. It, I mean, the requirement has. Uh, the biggest issues have come up because they're in the forty-acre unplanted egg zone tax on properties. There's been one or two that have gone up that have been closer to residential areas, although they met the administrative review. Um, I received several phone calls for hours. After it went into the administrative review and there was a lot of concern that the neighbors were not giving, given the ability to. And there was a lot of concern that the neighbors were not giving, given the ability to speak to it.
You believe this will improve on that?
Yes, I I believe that it'll give that ability for the neighbors, even on a forty acre unplanted portion, to come in and and have a voice with them, whether or not this commission decides.
What about our notification distances won't change?
Notification distance will change because with the administrative review, even under that one, only the abutting people got the notice under the original administrative review. Under this new one, it'll be the five hundred feet. There will be, and then we did write in the revocation procedure, all of the procedures that are normally in all of our ones that are like a CUP. So it's more consistent with our other ones that are that are similar, like our mining, our marijuana, and this one, to where you have some more ability from the public to take part in the process, essentially.
I have to admit that I don't do as well as I should, especially under time restraints of comparing this ordinance revision back to the book that we've got. Some things do get by me sometimes, believe it or not, Mr. Chair. So this particular one, I was on a little bit of a time restraint, but I appreciate you explaining why you believe this would be in order to help your your system.
I do. And after speaking with, you know, in those two instances of those two towers, I understand the procedure and I, you know, I believe of, you know, from an administrative review versus a CUP, there was a lot of discretion. And Jason and I talked about it quite a bit. And I think that discretion needs to go away and it needs to be just a TC permit for all of them.
Thank you. Because I still have a lot of heartburn over that three hundred footer on three eighty-five. It isn't even done yet. And wait until we see that and some of those neighbors see it.
Yeah, and one thing that I would like to point out too, that I don't think that most people are aware of, specifically with that one instance where it was approved through the administrative process, we had people that were contacting us wanting to appeal the decision. And they hadn't been notified of it and the appeal time was already passed. So they really got no say in whether it was up or not. So in an effort to try to bring the community in to make some of these decisions too, so.
Although it won't help them in their situation, at least it, you know, their concerns were noted and trying to improve the situation. Or at least the process.
I think we'd have done a better job under this one over the three hundred footer, except for the emergency funds were the 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 basis for my heartburn on the other. That's what made the review process just ridiculous. Thank you.
Further discussion? Noting none, staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty-two dash zero five. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and second for approval for the discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item six. Sorry, seventeen.
So seven, item seventeen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-two dash zero six for Pennington County to amend section five eleven fees of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. It was to amend the fees for the telecommunications facilities permit. Originally, it was six hundred dollars. We're requesting it to go up to a thousand. And then we're removing the administrative review. So just to get some understanding, every time that they wanted to change something on their facilities, they would have to get a pay administrative review fee and then pay a building permit fee. So now it's just the flat fee for the original one. And now because an administrative review and a building permit fee, they're really, the building permit review, there's not much dissimilarity in it. When we review the building permit, we review all of the conditions of the permit anyway. So it'll remove that review fee cost. So it'll just be the building permit fee and then the original facility permit fee. So the building permit fee, every time they change any technology on those, they have to come in and get a new building permit to do that. And under the old TC permits, if they were a TC permit, they also had to get a administrative review. So it takes away that.
Questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair, just for, if you remember, because you were here during that time, there was a request for the facility permit everywhere from five thousand down to to the six hundred that finally got approved. But some of that was because of the initial fee. In other words, the first time through on it was the cost that it took us to send personnel to review it and the level of review that it was required on a tower versus other types of building.
Right, and that's what that thousand is. And it's consistent with our wind and solar permits, they're consistent.
I think you're being nice. I'd have gotten a little higher. Thank you.
It's consistent with the wind and solar, so.
So would you make them all higher?
I was gonna say fifteen hundred, but.
And for the wind and the solar and everything else?
Staff, additional staff time for to cover some of, on the initial one only, the initial request before it's built.
Right, and that is what the facility permit is? And then any changes or any other things would fall under a building permit fee?
See, I would see fifteen hundred as more acceptable and more in tune with the times now. We have a lot of staff commitment to a tower. Thank you.
Okay. Further comments? Staff recommends approval of OA twenty-two dash zero six. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Discussion. Voting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item eighteen.
So item eighteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-two dash zero seven for Pennington County to amend the Pennington County subdivision regulations. The biggest reason for this amendment is to reference the ordinance fourteen standards and remove them from, so the county highway department is working on amending their ordinance fourteen standards. So now it just references ordinance fourteen. So now every time ordinance fourteen changes, we don't have to amend our subdivision regulations. So in that, it will make that process much simpler. Moving forward, that means that we won't have to do two ordinance amendments every time they they do that. And then there were some clarifications under the subdivision plan exceptions, minor plan, month line adjustment plan. For D and E, we added those sections. We did add those sections for the required information that needed to be submitted in the effective period of the minor plats. And, oh, excuse me, the month line adjustment plats and the minor plats, because that wasn't clearly indicated in here. We did get a couple of comments from some of the surveyors when they received the document. So we were trying to incorporate some of their concerns or their questions as they're working through the document to work with their clients. So we did add some of those changes to that. And that is on page ten, I believe, at the bottom of table, page ten.
I don't think I had page numbers.
It's just before the new.
It's section three oh three.
Is it forty-two?
Three oh three D.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've got it up on the screen, too.
So several changes. We can go through it. I'm not sure the level of comments. I don't know if we should go through. I have like big picture questions to ask. But why don't we just start with each person's comments and we'll go through first instead of going page by page? You wanna go first, Charlie?
Sure. Mine's simple, I think it's a good idea. My only question was ordinance fourteen standard information. Is that readily available from our highway department and easy for a developer to secure the requirements they're going to be able, so that they can plan to meet the requirement?
They've actually incorporated these tables. So we've removed them from ours and they've put them in ordinance fourteen.
And it's all online.
Yeah.
So any of our county ordinances are available online. Anybody can look at them at any time.
All of these tables.
So they've kind of stepped up since we had the meetings reviewing some of this, too. Okay, thank you.
I looked up fourteen and didn't see these. I looked the other day.
So that ordinance amendment is coming forward in front of the Board of Commissioners. It should be around the same time that this goes to the Board of Commissioners. Because their ordinances are different than ours as far as statutorily and how they get them approved. They don't have to go in front of the planning commission, they just go in front of the board. So it's a little different.
Okay. Can I have a side question? The ESTM stuff they used to refer to, is that also available through them?
That's in their ordinance fourteen.
Yeah, I saw this and panicked a little bit. There will not be a gap in time between when we approve this and get rid of all of the table requirements and the time that section fourteen becomes amended and is and is active. Is that correct?
So what I would prefer from my point of view is to have both items up on the same day so they both become effective simultaneously.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I'm not good with the gap. Because I looked at this and I thought, we can't do this. We we that, these are like huge parts of everything that happens with subdivisions. So I I want, this is my big question, the rest of it is really not important.
So we are working with, I know that Jerry is working with Connie over at the highway department to make sure that they're advertised on the same day. So they will be heard on the same day in front of the board. The highway department does require two readings in front of the board. So they will look at these, make any changes. They will continue this one to the same time as the ordinance fourteen. And then they will approve both of them on the same day. So their effective dates will be the same.
And I'll be, I'll be at the Board of Commissioner meeting so I can remind everybody at that time to continue this one if if it's necessary. So that way it all falls on the same day.
Because there could be some changes in the ordinance fourteen from the first hearing to the second hearing. We want to make sure that they're incorporated in here if if necessary. And then that final reading will be the same day, so their effective date will be the same.
I just, I I looked at this and I thought, I don't wanna, I don't wanna ha- have the position where someone comes in and and wants to develop something and now they don't really have to follow any rules, quite frankly.
And staff has spoken about that and we were concerned about that gap and taking plats in during that time, so.
I just, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust. It's gotta come together at the same time or not at all. Maybe my. Further questions? Nothing?
Nothing.
Mr. Chair, I have one for Brittany. Can we require the state to to follow your stamp that you've got included for them now, State Highway Department?
The DOT, actually, that was an email request from them to put on our, one of our.
They're on board.
They are.
That's all I wanted to know. That's what I was saying. Because we do go back and that, back and forth sometimes where the state does wanna cooperate with something that they've kind of supported.
Right, so these are if then, so if it's a road district, it would have that certificate if it was.
I think that stamp's a great one. It should probably have been on there before.
There's been two of them of late.
And it actually, it actually should have been. So the reason why all of our certificates have been updated the way that they have been is because they were not in compliance with state law.
The law comes in here with guns, it's because I just bumped that red. When I went to point my finger.
Here we go.
I just bumped it.
Charlie, they shouldn't put you in that chair.
I felt I better tell you, Mr. Chair, I felt I better tell you that before.
So my question is in section seventeen oh one. Is it similar to the intent of moving everything out of here and having everything in section fourteen and referring to that? Is there any way to refer to just like a current list? These these certificates were my nemesis when I was a consultant because they were constantly changing and updating and I never had the right one and had to redo things four or five times. Is there like a current list that that the register has that we could just refer to the current list to remind everybody to go get the current list? Or, because you're gonna have the same thing. These these certificates change over time. And we have to, we'll have to do the same thing, go back and amend this ordinance because the certificate's different.
As far as when the statutes change?
Yeah.
So the, these ones are actually ones that should have probably been worded in that way prior that we were working with. I know that the one where you, the planning commission actually has a certificate of the approval date and those things as they change.
It's just a, it's maybe something to consider where these are on some sort of current list as opposed to in here. Because, man, these things seem to have changed.
Well, so it's it's actually codifying state statute. Unfortunately, we're just gonna have to change our certificates as state law changes. And I can tell you, let me pull up this statute. Which one is it?
So some of the difficulty when Megan and I were going through here, some of these certificates and the requirements are under the register of deeds. Some of them are under the treasurer's office.
Yes.
Some of them are under the auditor's office. Some of them are under the planning. So it's, you know, for us, we were trying to put these all together and we we tried to do most of that work. So these should be good unless, you know, again, statute.
And I'm no longer subdividing things and doing, you know, consulting engineering work. But they wanna make a subdivision, the current list will be in the current ordinance amendment, right?
It should be. I mean, we'll just unfortunately have to update as the statute changes. So if you look at, this is the main one that we have to follow. The last time it was updated was in nineteen ninety-seven. So most of these statutes are pretty old and have stayed the same for, you know, this is thirty years.
So maybe my question is, maybe I'm not quite right in my ask. I wasn't doing work in nineteen ninety-seven. The the requirements for specific ones on the plat and the changes in names and and those types of things as far as underlying names and people and that kind of stuff, is there a current list of all of those things that's kept somewhere?
No, just our ordinance, we just have them in these certificates. And as far as, I have talked to one engineer consultant about this and we have just said that these need to be verbatim. Megan just wants these verbatim, just stick with these until.
Yes, they do have to be verbatim, otherwise it comes back.
Yes, so, but, like I said, all of these we took from the statutes because we had to go to all of the different statutes under all of the different, not just our office, but all of the other ones to make sure. And then we we looked at these in accordance with Lincoln County, Brown County, and Hughes County, and they're all the same. Like, so these certificates are consistent with all of those other three counties, which are the three counties we kind of look to because of.
Who their attorneys are.
Their attorneys are. Yes, so.
I have no further comments. Staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-two dash zero seven. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. County Board report?
All right, the county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the April twenty-fifth meeting with the exception of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-two dash zero seven and Rezone twenty-two dash seven for Jack and Ray Zima. Those two items were approved by the board. And then item two was the Plan Unit Development Overlay twenty-two dash zero six for Katie Semirnov and Brooke Wolfish. That item was continued to the May seventeenth board meeting at the request of the applicant.
Anything else? Okay. No, no items from the public. Chambers are empty. Items from staff, the building permit report?
So the building permit report, we are on pace with the same as twenty twenty-one. For the number of permits and the cost per permits, we're actually up on single family residences again this year. We did forty-nine year to date, seven permits for the month. We'll see those pick up more as the lots get planted and the plats get approved by the city. So we're on pace for twenty twenty-one again in twenty twenty-two, which was a record year in twenty twenty-one, so. And then the other item from staff that's not on the list is, we did get approval. They did make appointments for the Vacation Home Rental Committee. So there are seven individuals on that committee. We will start our meeting, the first meeting will be June second. Up in the Planning Commission, our planning meeting room, Charlie is going to facilitate, help facilitate those meetings. I did send, we did have that survey that was sent out to Alouin, so we downloaded all the information from the survey. We sent it out to all of the members to review. I listed some. Um, I listed some questions, I gave them a lot of homework on Charlie. Yes, a lot of homework to come back, um, for the main, or for the June 2nd meeting, so.
We don't have the results from all the survey items yet. Is there any Cliff Notes version that you can?
There was a lot of 60, 40%, I would say. It wasn't really half and half, there was a lot of 60, 40, more towards the.
Didn't the one thing that, yeah, I thought the, the support versus no support was 80, 20, wasn't it?
Yeah, the support was 80, 20, but, yeah.
Boy, I about fell off the chair when that popped out of the machine.
But the different kinds of uses as far as allowing them in ADUs and multiple ones and, and things like that, or more in that 60, 40.
Being the multiple answers.
No multiple, um, vacation homes on the property. Um, the, the biggest concern, of course, was like strangers in the neighborhood, the trespassing issue, um, seemed to be the biggest concern, um.
I think the committee would even like to see the one that were, uh, with the comments, the written comments at the end on top of the survey. Uh, I'm still going through those, and it, I already pointed out to my boss that it, it's a head-scratcher.
Yeah.
When you read all the comments versus the survey.
There's some useful information, there is about 300 responses, so.
294, is that right?
Yeah, I think that was.
Yeah, there was a lot of response, a lot of pro, con, a lot of good comments.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
Nope, that's it.
Items from the membership?
Just, go ahead.
I have a question for Megan. Um, my husband's an attorney, and he heard through the roundabout that, um, an item that we sent forward to the, to the commissioners with no recommendation got us in trouble. Is that, that Planning Commission should make recommendations?
Uh, that hasn't been decided yet whether that's, uh, correct or incorrect.
Okay.
Um, so, that, that's the Apple Valley, um, appeal that's pending in front of the Circuit Court right now, so at this point, there really isn't an answer. It's up to the judge to decide whether that was correct or incorrect.
Um, it seems interesting that, that we would be in trouble when the board went ahead and approved it. I, I mean, there's no, no harm, no foul, really.
Ultimately, I mean, the way that it would end up working if, and we should probably be doing this in executive session as opposed to, on the record, um, but I can explain if you guys want to briefly go into executive session, how all of that works, um, and then we can come back out and then finish, so.
I'm good with that. Everyone else?
Since it is pending litigation.
Okay. Where do we do that at?
Just back in the other room.
Okay.
So, if you guys want to move to go into executive session and then vote, and then we'll go in, and then we'll come out of executive session.
Is there a motion?
Also move.
Second.
Motion in second to go to executive's discussion, or executive session. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Let's go.
I need a motion, come back here, she's ready.
So, move.
Second.
Motion in second to reconvene, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are reconvened, and any other items from the membership?
Just one, what, when you weren't at the, the one meeting, we discussed whether it was possible, and Brittany said, uh, it was, uh, that any major or entire rewriting of a section of an ordinance could be submitted to a somewhat ahead of time, so that we don't have to just do it from Thursday till Monday when we come here? So, that, and I guess this ordinance would be a perfect example, where I could go back to the book and have some time, and there was others that indicated they'd like to be able to do that, too. I just wanted to tell you you weren't here, and I said I don't, didn't want it brought up then.
I think that that, I think that that's fine, and, and, um, uh, I, I don't know at what point, um, staff has, uh, drafts of various things where you would be okay having kind of a preliminary review before it comes in front of the board, or will we get ourselves into a situation where information has to go all out at the same time?
Uh, we can send it out earlier. I did get it sent out to the Board of Commissioners at the same time you had it, so then that way they had it in time, and I'll get it to you guys, I'll try to get it, excuse me, to the Planning Commission a little earlier. Typically, they're done Tuesday, Wednesday, um, so I can send them out, um, to the Planning Commission on Tuesday, Wednesday, at least they'll give another day or two, um, for major ones.
I don't have any problem other than anything major of the entire thing. I think when we do these other ones, it's just find a red line and go through them. I think those are usually, you can refer back to what you were looking at and make a decision.
Well, the Vacation Home Rental one will probably be.
Yeah, that's going to be a biggie.
Yeah, that one will have a, quite a bit of rewrites, so that will come out earlier.
Is the, um, is the mining ordinance on schedule for next meeting?
I believe so, it was continued until next meeting.
Right, okay. Um, anything else from the membership? If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion for approval, for adjournment, excuse me.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion in second to adjourn. If you're, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.